8th of July. Proposed, councillor Newman. Secondor, councillor O'Brien. And councillor, county council meeting, Monday night of September at 5pm. All mobile phones should be on silent or switched off for the duration of the meeting. Please note that the meeting is being webcast. All members, please remember to switch off your microphone when you finish speaking. All members are reminded that the chamber is a non-smoking or vaping area. Standing orders will apply to all aspects of the meeting. Councillors are reminded of the provisions of standing order number 92, that all members are bound to act in accordance with the ethics framework and the code of conduct for local authority members to cooperate with the orderly conduct of meetings, the direction of the mayor, and in a manner that is respectful of colleagues. Members have been circulated with the agenda for today's meeting and any member forming the view that they have a conflict of interest in the matters subject to today's agenda should now disclose the same. Councillors are also reminded of the provisions of standing order number 93, that members must bear in mind that discussions at council meetings are not privileged. No member may make false statements, impute improper motives, or use offensive or unbecoming words in reference to any member of the council, employee of the council, or any other person. Any member having made such statements or used such objectionable words, not explaining or retracting same, or offering apologies for the use thereof, when requested by the mayor to do so, shall be called upon by the mayor to withdraw from the meeting. Members making any such statements or comments may find themselves personally liable for them. And we have had one request for an emergency motion. Unfortunately, I have to rule it out of order because it's not directly related to the function of the council and within the terms of standing orders, not strictly speaking, an emergency in that matter. And so, item number two, nominations, the filling of a casual, sorry councillor Geirin.
Mayor, I was just wondering would it be possible, because we're at the start of more or less a new term, if corporate affairs, maybe they have done, if they could circulate the code of conduct to members. I didn't get one, and just to refresh it and go through it. If that could be done, I'd really appreciate it.
I'm sure that can be done, no issue.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so all new members received it, so we can do it again for everybody as well. Okay, thanks. Item number two, nominations, the filling of a casual vacancy on Fingal County Council following the resignation of councillor Marion Buckley. Councillor Donnelly.
I'd like to nominate Anne Graves.
Seconded by councillor Malachi Quinn. Agreed? Agreed. Anna, welcome back to councillor Graves. So, questions number... Councillor Graves, you've got a chance to speak if you wish.
Yeah, just very quickly, I, thanks very much for the nomination and I'm hoping I'm doing the right thing, I'm sure I am. I'm delighted to be back, wish the circumstances were different. I do want to wish Marion the best of luck for a full recovery to help, but I do think I have unfinished business from the last term that I'd like to hit the ground running and carry on. I'm delighted too that a female's stepping in to fill the seat because we don't do too well in terms of gender equality, our gender balance, let's say, on the councils and one in seven and so on. It's a bit dismal, I think, so I'm delighted to be back. I'm looking forward to working with all of the councillors, including the newer councillors that I don't know so well. So I do look forward to getting to work with them, but business as usual. And thanks, yeah.
Thanks. Questions number three to eighteen. Proposed. Proposed councillor Walsh, seconded councillor McCandley. Nineteen, report of committees for noting. Proposed. Proposed, A, the report of the Special Corporate Policy Committee, CPG meeting held on Tuesday 27th of August 2024. Proposed. Seconded councillor O'Brien. B, report of the Corporate Policy Group, CPG meeting held on Monday 2nd December 2024. Proposed. Seconded councillor O'Brien. C, report of the Houth Malahide Services B Area Committee meeting held on Wednesday 4th of September. Proposed councillor Tommie, seconded councillor O'Brien. D, report Blanchestown 100 Castle Knock Angar Services Area Committee meeting held on Thursday 5th of September 2024. Proposed councillor Kit, seconded councillor Anno Mara. Financial matters, we've no presentation. Proposed disposal of properties. A, notice of proposed grant of way leave and temporary works, licence for Finglis to Fieldstown Cable Route Coldwinters Dublin 11 to Air Grid. Need a proposer. Proposed councillor Newman, seconded councillor O'Leary. B, notice of proposed disposal, oh sorry, and agreed. Agreed. B, notice of proposed disposal land at Old Reservoir, site the Hill, Malahide, County Dublin, to Prosper Fingal. Proposed. Seconded councillor O'Brien. Agreed. Agreed. And item C, fee simple disposal. There isn't any, okay, great. Twenty-two, there's no declaration of roads, no terms of reference. Twenty-three. Sorry, yeah. Okay, great. I haven't got it here. Oh, twenty, fee simple, proposed, there are disposals there, okay. Proposed. Secondor, seconded councillor Geirin. Agreed? Agreed. Okay, and then we have item twenty-three, the terms of reference to the Arab Balbriggan Leadership Committee. We also have a, yeah, Mr. Conlevon, we also have a motion on this, which we could take now if you... You can, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Members, it's the terms of reference of the Arab Balbriggan Leadership Group. The group was required to undertake a review of its functioning and the functioning of the programme at a kind of a midterm point. That was undertaken at the first part of the year at a fairly opportune time, given the level of progress and activity there have been on a lot of the most significant projects up there. So the review has taken place, there's some changes to the terms, nothing particularly significant. There is primarily, it's around the clarification and function and membership of the pillar groups, the establishment of a new pillar group to deal specifically with sustainability, climate action and biodiversity. Now, and then there's also a change to the number of the elected members nominated to the group, which was the subject of councillor Quinn's motion. It's considered appropriate at the time, given the significant progress on the physical projects and the need to move towards implementation on the economic and community elements in a more substantive way. So councillor Quinn's motion proposed this. It's been incorporated into the terms as it's considered an appropriate thing to do. So the revised terms were circulated to members last week and are presented to you today for agreement.
Twenty-four, the report on the Bileili landfill liaison.
Members, Bileili landfill liaison committee was set up a number of years ago, obviously to do with the issues for works when Bileili was being changed from a landfill to a park. Now, the work is substantially complete at Bileili and we're discussing with operations in relation to opening hours for Sunday. It's already open on a Saturday. The EMT are recommending, instead of having a liaison committee, that we give a quarterly report to the Marine and Coastal SPC to keep them up to date on any issues around Bileili landfill liaison committee. I'm happy to take any questions from the members.
Councillor Donoghue, sorry, didn't see you there.
Thanks, sir. Just that the members who are on the landfill commission at the moment, that they be kept in the loop as well. If we can send it to, send whatever the report is to them, all good.
Yeah, the report to be circulated to the councilors for that area and obviously the liaison committee.
Okay, agreed. We are on to item twenty-five, the draft strategic policy committee scheme 2024 to 2029, and a proposal from director Egan.
Thank you, Mayor. The draft SPC scheme was presented to yourselves at the July council meeting, where you agreed to put it out on public display, which was approved at that meeting. It went out on public display from the 17th of July to the 19th of August, and eight submissions in total were received. Special meeting of the CPG on the 27th of August considered the submissions received and the proposed changes to the draft scheme. And the meeting of the CPG itself held on the 2nd of September, approved the proposed draft scheme and recommended it for adoption by yourselves. The eight submissions that we received are summarised in the report that was circulated. So what the eight submissions, summary of the eight submissions received was circulated in a report, and then the draft scheme, including the amendments as agreed by the CPG, were also circulated. So I'm happy to take any questions or go through it in more detail, councillors wish.
Councillor Tommie.
Thank you. When I was reading through it, certainly there are some committees that are more popular than others. And my question is, why have we reduced the housing and the enterprise SPCs from eight members to six? Certainly my understanding is there was no sussing out in terms of what people wanted or where the interest lies in the presentation that you have or that you are giving to us there. It has six members on seven SPCs, that's 42. So you're expecting two councillors to sit on two SPCs. Was that put out to councillors to suss out the interest there in terms of who actually wants to sit on two SPCs? I just feel like the practicality surrounding this wasn't really considered in terms of the allocating the number of members per SPC. Certainly in my group, the Finnegan group, we'd be looking to get two members on some of these SPCs. Are we going by the same criteria as in 2019, where we're looking at gender, geography and political affiliation in terms of how these are being distributed? And so I'd just like a little bit of clarity in terms of that process surrounding that. A procedural query as well. Is it possible to put down a motion right now to amend the numbers in each SPC right now, prior to adoption? It would be a motion in response to a report, I believe. Thank you.
Councillor Ryan.
In relation to the eight submissions, was there anything contained in any of those eight submissions that was incorporated into the final scheme?
Councillor Mulvane.
Thanks, thanks for your thanks for the report. And, you know, I made a submission myself and I think there was some feedback on it, which I welcome, you know. And just to point, I know we had it on the C of the OP&amp;F agenda. We didn't reach it in terms of the standing orders being amended to allow the public and the media attend the SPCs again, because the SPCs are very good and important. I think we need to do more to animate them and make them more useful in terms of our work as councillors and for the council. But in terms of the new SPC guidelines, now they did state that the council should have in their standing orders provision for the public and the media to attend SPC meetings. So I just seek an understanding, seek, you know, clarification that that's the understanding now that that will be included in our upcoming standing order review, that the presence of the public and media representatives at SPC meetings in accordance with section 45 of the Local Government Act as amended, 2001 as amended, will be included now in, for consideration of the upcoming standing orders review. Thanks.
Councillor Hopkins.
Echo what councillor Mulvane was saying there about media attendance. The whole point of the SPCs, as we all know, local authorities in Ireland don't have a lot of power. Well, the power lies with the executive. And the SPCs are the one place where we have, we can change policies and where the public are encouraged to engage via the public participation network. So again, anything where we have the media involved, it promotes the SPCs, it engage, it actively engages our citizens, that's really important. And secondly, I just want to ask if the chairs have been allocated and if they have not, when they will be allocated, because last year, obviously, I believe I was the only female chair of an SPC and we need to make sure that we have gender balance going forward. Thank you.
Councillor O'Leary.
I don't have a problem with the media being present at the SPCs and at the one I chaired. We did have the media present and worked out okay. But I think we should have the ability to go into private session, similar to the DOD committee, and then go into the SPC meeting proper, in case there's anything of sensitive or legal matters prior to having a meeting. So I think it could work that way. If it can work for the DOD committee, it can work for the SPC.
Councillor Geirin.
Yeah, I have to say, I wouldn't be in favour of letting the media into the SPCs because I do believe that the SPC, as they're constructed, where we have the executive, where we have members of the public and where we have elected members, there can be open and frank exchange of views. There can be direct and robust discussion. And I believe if the media are present, it may, A, either restrict that or B, it can lead to the temptation that a lot of us can fall to at times where we'd be addressing the media more than the committee or the grouping. I think that the SPCs have served as well and I would, wouldn't like to see any change in that regard. Thank you.
So strictly speaking, on the last two contributions, it's not really, it's a bit off topic, but it is worth airing the debate, seeing it as being introduced. Councillor Newman.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I've given this a bit of thought and really it can go one way or the other. I'm not really pushed on it, but I do feel that what we will have, if we allow media in to report on everything at the SPC, there'll be no need to be sending out the minutes because the press will be putting it out there and the councillors will have sight of it through the press. They won't have time, you know, then we're coming back to try and debate something. So I think it's appropriate that, you know, the, whatever said at the SPC meetings are brought back here to the members. And at that point in time, the media can come in here and to listen and make a comment, but you're not bypassing the council, so I just have concerns. Thanks.
Again, for clarity, you know, it's worth debating under a other thing, but just in relation to this draft scheme, that's not, we're not voting on that or there's no part of the agreement in relation to that within the draft scheme for consideration. And is Egan, oh, councillor Murphy.
Chair, no, I just want to agree with, I think councillor Geirin expressed it well, that unfortunately sometimes the mood and conversation can change if there is media present.
Councillor Murphy, I'm just not, it's off topic, we've had the discussion on it, so if there, if there's anything related to the scheme.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Tommie had a number of questions there in relation to the number of councillors on each SPC and the numbers in terms of the last SPC scheme, when it was formulated, there were eight councillors, I think, on housing and the economic and tourism, but we only had six SPCs. Now we have seven. So at the Corporate Policy Group, it was agreed that each councillor would sit on one SPC that, and obviously if you do the maths, six, seven, so 42. So two councillors would have to sit on two SPCs, but everybody else, all 38 others, will only have one SPC to attend. And it was felt that attendance at SPCs, as well as all the other meetings, was quite onerous and that one SPC per councillor was what was required. And that was, I suppose, probably the situation more or less at the previous scheme, which was adopted in 2019, where we introduced the coastal and marine SPC halfway through that term, in which case the numbers had to increase. So that was, that was the rationale behind that. The process on nominations is, once the scheme is adopted by yourselves, we will seek nominations both from the sectoral reps and yourselves. And in terms of yourselves, we will be asking councillors to indicate their preference, their top three, and we will then decide and try and accommodate everybody's first preference if we can. But as councillor Tommie correctly pointed out, we do have to take into account the geographical, political affiliations, expertise that any councillors may have on the SPCs and gender balance, sorry, I knew there was a fourth one, gender balance. So all of those things have to be taken into consideration. So we will, as far as we can, try and accommodate all the councillors' first preferences, but we won't be able to in all cases. But that's the process around it. In terms of amending the scheme, yes, it can be amended today. This is here for your decision, it's your scheme, so you can make amendments. Councillor Ryan, on the submissions made, yes, there were a number of changes made to the draft scheme. We included wellbeing as an objective across all of the SPCs and also the promotion of the Irish language across all of the SPCs. We included gender balance in the community SPC. And we kind of tidied up some of the other issues there. We also put inclusion in as a title, not on the title, but in the remit of the community-based issues there. So, you know, there were a number of submissions taken on board. The media attending the meetings, Mayor is quite right, this is a matter for standing orders and we've already undertaken, well, we didn't reach the motions, but we're ready to undertake a review of standing orders. It will have to be done anyway because there are particular changes in relation to the guidelines on SPCs that we will have to incorporate into our own standing orders so we can undertake to have a review of the media question as well. The chairs, councillor Hopkins, have, as you know, have been chosen and we have chairs designated at the moment. It'll be up to yourselves in terms of who chairs which committee. That's yourselves. And the gender balance is, well, the chairs have already been chosen, so, and elected by yourselves. I think that's all the questions, Mayor.
Councillor Humphries.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief, it doesn't need a response from the executive. I just want to kind of remind particularly kind of Mr. Carroll at the last housing SPC on the result of councillor Burchill's motion, that we agreed to kind of look at inviting CASU to be one of the external bodies on the housing SPC. Sorry, that we didn't agree that we'd invite them, that we'd agree that it'd be something that we looked at, just that... No, it's just a reminder, seeing that we're doing the external bodies at the moment before we A ourselves are selected with.
Sorry, Mayor, the Irish Congress of Trade Unions are already represented on the housing SPC, so it'll be their nominee, whoever that is, that will be nominated as a sectoral rep there.
Councillor Tommie.
Am I correct in hearing that I had heard your professional expertise is taken into account by corporate services in terms of choosing which member goes where? And how's that being determined then?
Will there be any expertise that are indicated to us by a councillor in terms of any particular SPC and their reasoning for expressing their preference for that SPC?
Councillor Tommie, we're not going to get into a discussion, is there a proposal to, are there any amendments for the... Have we an amendment? Councillor Newman.
I need clarification. I'm just wondering, Miss Egan, I mean, I intend to put myself down for a couple of, obviously, SPCs and specific chair that I'd like to do, but, you know, it's important that, I know you said people will put forward their reasons for wanting to be on an SPC, so you're going to kind of interview them on the basis of what they say? Or is it just kind of, will you just... You know, so I'm just wondering, as councillor Tommie said, maybe, how is that going to be done, you know, before we move on?
Councillors will be asked to list their preferences or rank their preferences in order, so one, two, number one, two and three, and any other detail if they want to express that they have a particular expertise in an area that may be taken into account. But we will also have to take into account gender balance within each SPC, the geographical spread across the members of the SPC and, oh, political affiliation, sorry, I keep forgetting. Political affiliation on each one.
Councillor Tommie.
I submitted a motion requesting that the enterprise SPC goes up to seven members. Like, we have a commitment from somebody within our group to go on to two SPCs, so we will make the numbers work from a political perspective, but we would like to have, I suppose, make sure that there is the buffer there on the enterprise SPC.
We'll see when the motion come in, have we received the motion? Councillor Bowman.
I think that you're taking on to yourself powers that you are not really entitled to. It is the members who decide the issue. It is a members committee. And it is not up to management to ruffle through the application forms and decide whom they like and who they'll assign to whatever duty. It is the members committee. I can appreciate the issue in terms of, you know, we have a problem in terms of trying to select the number and the notion of saying, this is my first preference, second preference, third preference, and for you to sort it out on that basis. And where you have a clutter of people looking for a particular SPC, perhaps the option is to draw it by ballot. But for you to decide whether one person's expertise is greater than another is going far beyond what is reasonable for a civil servant effectively to do to the elected members of this chamber. It is unacceptable and on democratic. This is a democratic chamber, not a dictate from the executive.
Perhaps I think you want to rephrase that. I don't really think that there's any suggestion that anybody was dictating anything. In my view, the whole piece is always approved by the members and everything else is just a mechanism to try and get there as smoothly and as carefully as possible. And I think you've just slightly overstepped it in saying that it's a dictation. This is all done at the agreement. Councillor O'Brien.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I think in fairness to Miss Egan, the scenario we ran the last time was to try and assist the members with the process, to try and get that... to try and get that balance on the committees across the four pillar items that Miss Egan remembers most of which. But, so I don't see the problem that councillor Bowland has with that. I mean, it's not going to be a dictat in any way, shape or form. It'll ultimately be agreed in this room. The question I have in relation to councillor Chommy's motion is the two to one requirement of members, of elected members to outside. If the maths are going to work on that with the proposal at seven? Or how can that be managed? Because that's a, it's a technical point that will matter if this comes to a vote. Thanks.
Councillor Burchill.
Councillor Chommy raised a good point there on the reduction in numbers, in particular the housing SPC. You know, housing is the key issue of our time. So I feel that the membership shouldn't have been reduced from eight to six. And I'll be submitting a motion to that effect to corporate services now.
Councillor Mowbray.
Just on councillor Chommy's motion there, I think, and firstly, thank Miss Egan, sorry, for the response earlier on. I appreciate that. And I guess we're not talking with the media only, we're talking with the public as well, I guess. So if those two points could be considered in the review. But just on this motion here, I think the point in terms of the coastal SPC, when that came up from councillor Bowland's motion two years ago, there was, I think, ten people put on that because it was seen as a specialist SPC. So it was kind of separate from the allocation and the rest of the thing because it was a new thing and it was specialist. So I think that's why I'm maybe throwing the numbers here. Because as councillor Burchill said, there was a lot more people on the housing SPC, for example, because it's such an important committee and so much interest in, you know, trying to address the housing issue. So, I mean, I don't know if that arrangement for the coastal SPC can be looked at again in terms of deciding the allocation. Thanks.
So we have one motion or amendment before the, motion to amend the scheme before the floor. Need a proposer and a second for us. Proposed councillor Tom Cuthormy, seconding councillor O'Leary. Any speakers on it? We'll just go straight to a, straight to a vote then? Is it agreed?
Elected members.
There are three sectoral reps currently listed for the economic, enterprise and tourism SPC and six currently on the, for councillors. So we do have to have a third minimum of sectoral reps. So if we bring it up to seven, we're still within the third.
Is the motion agreed? Agreed, okay. Councillor Burchill.
Thank you, mayor. In answer to councillor Bowland and his query, I suppose the guideline set out that the balance or that the membership has to be taken into account in terms of geographical, political, gender balance and any expertise that members may have. I'm providing just a mechanism for that, but obviously it's adopted and approved by full council. And maybe I just didn't fully explain that at the start.
Thank you, councillor Bowland. Proposed councillor Burchill, I'll second that, that's okay. Any speakers? Agreed? Agreed. So can I propose the scheme with these two amendments made, proposed? Seconding Mary McCamley. And agreed? Agreed, okay. Now we're on to chief executives. Okay, we're to the chief executive's report. And the chief executive is asked just to make a statement at the start of her report. Just to clarify some issues that are being currently debated.
Members, the chief executive's report is circulated as the strong report for July and August. It really covers the two months. As you'd expect, there's a lot of information about the events we ran over the summer. And in addition to that, I draw your attention to the increased cost of doing business grant, where our finance department led on the payment of eleven million euro to business. Over two thousand eight hundred businesses benefited from that grant scheme. And just to note the speed at which that was processed and to thank the finance team for that. I'd also draw your attention to the affordable housing and just to see, to say it's really good to see a number of schemes now fully sale agreed, four schemes in total, with the further four schemes with units for sale. And just draw your attention to that report. In addition to the written report, I feel I do have a responsibilities to members to clarify some matters in relation to the ongoing media reports around Dublin Airport. And firstly, I just want to confirm that the national aviation policy, the Fingal Development Plan and the Dublin Airport Local Area Plan provide a very strong planning framework for the growth of the airport to forty million passengers per annum. The Local Area Plan for the airport, which was put in place by the elected members back in twenty twenty, does assist the planning process and effectively acts as a guide for its development. So the Local Area Plan for the airport is available. It is based on a strong analysis of the consequence of growth and sets out the infrastructure needed to facilitate that growth. We deal with dozens of planning applications at the airport each year. And a key remit of the planning process is to assist applicants in meeting their development requirements while balancing the needs of third parties, such as the local community and, of course, the environment. I'm not aware of any conflicts between the planning law and other EU policies or regulations. The fact is that both planning and aircraft noise regulation have their basis in EU regulation. It is also not unusual for a business to be regulated by more than one code and to be obligated to run their business in a manner that satisfies all. And just to demystify the planning application process as it relates to any airport's growth. There are two key metrics in this process, that's people and planes. Any planning application will need to demonstrate that passengers can get to and from the airport. In Dublin Airport's case, this is by road, using a car, a bus, a bicycle or walking. The application must show that the peak times can be catered for in terms of road capacity and available public transport that's internal and external to the airport environments. For planes, any application must also forecast the business of the airport as it translates to aircraft movements. The model will include the daily number of flights, aircraft type, time, direction, mode of operation, et cetera. This facilitates an environmental assessment, including when required, a noise assessment. The Fingal Planning Team, ANCA and where appropriate, NTA and TII have been and always are available through pre-planning to assist and advise on any planning application at Dublin Airport. And the Local Area Plan is a key resource in any conversation. There are two current planning applications which are most relevant in terms of the debate around Dublin Airport. The first of these is the infrastructure application lodged the week before Christmas in twenty twenty-three. This involves eleven individual projects, as well as an application for a new cap of forty million passengers per annum. Not an easy option when the scale of the proposed development is considered and the stated time constraints are factored in. It was assessed during the required eight weeks and the principle of development is accepted, subject to meeting other planning requirements. The February planning report provides clear guidance on the issues that need to be addressed. And I understand that DIA are working on the additional information requested in February and was recently granted an extension of time to respond. The response must now be submitted by November twenty-four. The second one relates to night time flights and seeks the removal of the numerical cap on the number of flights permitted between the hours of eleven PM and seven AM daily. And both Planola, their adjudication is awaited. It's likely that the lack of stability in the noise environment caused by a number of changes to flight operations has delayed both of the planning applications and their responses to further information to the planning authorities on both Planola and to ANCA. A report on the planning enforcement is provided to members today under item thirty-one. I suppose litigation has become more common in relation to issues at Dublin Airport. The next case to be heard concerns the Fingal Development Plan, and that will commence hearing later this month. The list of active judicial reviews is available in the CEES report. The council has strong expert teams of planners, transport engineers, environmentalists, lawyers and noise experts in place. There are plenty of examples in Fingal of large multimillion euro infrastructure projects that our teams have guided through the planning process. And sustainable growth at Dublin Airport can be delivered as envisaged in the development plan and the local area plan. We're ready to assist DIA as we would any applicant through the pre-planning and are well set up to deliver both planning and noise statutory processes. I set that out just to give you the facts of the situation from the perspective of Fingal County Council and to make sure you have available to you the relevant information if you need it. Secondly, in relation to the open processes, such as the planning applications that are in assessment, as well as the planning enforcement, and of course, there's a noise assessment underway. I'm not going to say anything further today, if that's okay. But if there's any clarity you need on that status quo, please contact me after the meeting. Yes, I can circulate that in due course. So the chief executive's report is on the floor if there's any questions in relation to it.
Councillor Murphy.
Very comprehensive report. I just have one query on this. We, with the works going on in Sords, cultural quarter, we have the court services now operating in Balbriggan on a five day week system. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity through the whole process to have a look at a more appropriate dedicated building for court services, assisted by Fingal County Council, in order to put them into a less public space. There are some concerns in Balbriggan that have been voiced with regard to the activities around the court. And I know we can't control that, but it's in the confines of a very public space and we have a public library in the same area. So just if there was an opportunity to understand how long it's going to be there, if you can tell me how long it's going to take before the court service can be resumed in Sords? And if in the interim period, that maybe there could be an amalgamation of both services in a more appropriate setting? Thank you.
Councillor O'Leary.
Thanks, I think we're back in so quick. I just want to raise, in the context of the economic enterprise section, Wavon Pipes are leaving Balbriggan. It's a thirty-five acre site. I know it's a complicated site because there's buildings on it and whatever. And we had a bit of a briefing recently from the Arab Balbriggan town, a very comprehensive briefing. They're doing great work. But while it's a problem, it's an opportunity. And I'd like to call for a task force involving Fingal County Council, the IDA and the Department of Enterprise to look at what can be done there to either use the site for our purposes, Fingal, or to bring a big employer there or something. Anyway, it's thirty-five acres sitting in a peak position in the wonderful town of Balbriggan. Gave wonderful service to the town, wonderful employment. And I'd like some sort of heat put on it by a task force. That's not an unusual call to make in these situations. So that we can get a large employer back in there where there are eight to ten thousand kids in schools looking for jobs and coming out of schools. Thanks, thanks very much.
Councillor Walsh.
Thanks to the chief executive, very detailed report, as always. Just a couple of quick points. Just firstly to say, I was lucky enough to attend the Pride of Place competition in Casenot Community Centre in Lar Lodge. And I know it was also, two other centres were featured in Lusk and Skurri's. Just want to thank the community department, all of the officials of the community department who are involved in supporting the community centres. I mean, it was a fantastic day for the community centre there and they benefited greatly from the support of the community department. The other comment to have or question is around noise. I just welcome the fact that an application was made recently to the Department of the Environment for a pilot acoustic design for the area south of the N three, between Blanchestown Road North and Little Place, to assess the costs and benefits of noise mitigation measures. Might just like to get some sense of a time scale on that, as to when that might be implemented. And finally, just as was raising the wider issue of noise on the M fifty, I'd just like to check, has any progress been made? I know there was an undertaking given at the last meeting that the council, the executive would seek to follow up with TII to endeavour to get them to take M fifty, the impact of M fifty noise seriously. So I'd just like to ask, has any progress been made on that? Thanks very much.
Councillor Humphries.
Thank you, mayor. I just have kind of one question, one point. I'd just like to welcome the housing information event that's been held in Tyrrellstown on the twelfth of September. Before, it was also held an event in Sords and done a bit as well, actually. Is there any plans to hold similar events in Sords this year or early next year? I'd also kind of thank the events team for all the work over the summer. Like, every event I was at was absolutely astounding. And for some of them, like the vintage picnic, the tickets went in the blink of an eye. And then the one coming up in September, I think the press release went out about the storytime. And then I think about fifteen minutes later, there was a, sorry, we were fully booked up. It went up on Facebook about twenty minutes after that. Considering how successful we have come in Fingal of putting on these events, is it kind of time to kind of look at strategically how we can expand the capacity? Especially if these kind of smaller, kind of locally focused events that we hold? Thank you.
Councillor Donnelly.
Thanks very much and thanks for the report. Just a couple of things. It's, thanks very much for the extension of the dog run in Millennium Park. It's really welcome and it would be great to see those sort of improvements undertaken in other dog runs, particularly Hearth Town. Just in relation to dog runs, I recently put in a CRM for an expanded dog run in St Catherine's Park. And for us to look at some dog runs, not as a cornered off area for the dog to run around, but more a cornered off area of the park for dogs and their owners, which a lot of people seem to want to do rather than stand and watch the dog. I'd also like to welcome the service level agreement with Phoenix FM. I think it's brilliant. It's very encouraging to see that sort of initiative between the council and local radio station. And welcome the lights in Hearth Town Park. Thank you.
Councillor Gairid.
I'd like to thank Steve for the reports, just a couple of points like mine. First of all, the weekend just gone, I think we've seen the most amazing event organised by Fingal Outdoors that I've ever witnessed. And the festivities and hope were absolutely fantastic and a credit all involved. And it was lovely to see, although they're not completely finished, but the new toilets on the east pier and everybody seeing them and they've been well admired. So congratulations to both there. The economic plan, which was launched there last week, or early last week, was great. And it shows where we're going. I have two, just one concern really. You know, we've been great with businesses throughout Covid and we've done fantastic. And we gave them a lifeline in the parklets. And now we're proposing to take them back. And it's like removing a seatbelt, in my view, from a car. A number of businesses have become accustomed to them. It's form part of their turnover. And I'd really like, if chief executive and director, if we could look at maybe even extending this out another twelve months or something. I think we've done great by business, but I think if we do this now, we'd be hitting them on the slap in the face at a time they can't really afford it. Thanks.
Councillor O'Brien.
Thanks, mayor. Yeah, my first point relates to the removal of the parklets also. And I've raised it under the chief executive's report in the previous term a couple of times. What I would be seeking from the executive is an assurance that where businesses are availing of that space, we all knew that parklets were a temporary structure as such. But the businesses that are availing of the space should be supported, whether that be with footpath build outs, where we can provide cafe barrier type things. You know, that it's not just a case of them being removed. I know a number of businesses had asked for them to be removed. It's my view that once that space is returned to car parking, it becomes much more difficult to use it again for the kind of measure that it has been accustomed to. And I think it's a mistake by the council just to automatically go right. And I think it's a mistake by the council just to automatically go, right, that parklet's gone, now it's a parking space or a loading bay again. On a similar topic around parking, I think we need to look at developing a strategy around camper vans, parking in paying display areas, or a strategy to accommodate them in reasonable locations within our areas. I mean, there are obviously people coming in and supporting local economy, but it's more and more become a thing where you see camper vans overstaying, let's be frank about it, the three-hour limits in paying display areas, and particularly Saturday into Sunday, and it's causing an impact in terms of normal usage of those parking spaces. So I, just a question in that, mayor, is that, or has that been assessed at an executive level, or is there a plan to come for that? Thank you.
councillor Quinn.
The Chief Executive's report. I just want to highlight just a couple of things. I want to welcome the improvements across the Balbriggan LEA, and in particular the road projects around the active travel plan in Balbriggan. But I just have one concern, and it's the duration of certain sections of that, or one section in particular, which is Hamilton Road, with a large school complex at the top. We're looking at almost eighteen months now of works taking place. Works beginning up to a month after the schools had closed last year, the works began. The return to school last week was, to put it mildly, a bit of a nightmare. We had a traffic warden that was being told that she couldn't work that day. We had fencing put up. This lies solely with the company that is in charge of developing that, and thankfully Fingal County Council were on site within the hour to resolve that situation. But we shouldn't be at that juncture, and I think the development, or the companies seem to, they should realise that we have certain timelines and durations that need to be met. So just also just one thing that stood out is, a lot of work being taken place across the whole of the county in relation to, as just mentioned there, around toilets and the development of toilets will take place in Balbriggan and other areas as well as Rush, I believe. But could we look at the installation of rolling CCTV in the new areas of development? Just to address the points that have been made to myself, and I'm sure to other councillors, around attracting antisocial behaviour. This is what's been proposed to us. And then just finally, I just want to just thank the work, the continuous work of the events team in Balbriggan for a very great summer.
councillor Mulville.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks to Chief Executive and all the team for the report. Loads of excellent work going on as always, and I know it's great to read it in the multi-report. Just similar to what councillor Quinn just said, in terms of the summer events, I want to commend everyone who's involved in the Portrann Summer Festival, and the upcoming Commandos who have organised the upcoming annual Bleeding Pig Cultural Festival, which are fantastic events, and to thank the council's role in supporting and facilitating those events and funding them, which are hugely important work the council does. Secondly, in terms of the affordable housing, just receiving a few questions now, it's great to see people getting the offers made, and there's a lot to be made in offer of their new affordable homes. In situations where you have kind of phased affordable housing schemes, people are anxious to know, will the next phase, for example, be a whole fresh process? Or will people who already have put in, for example, in phase one, for example, Valium Stone in Dunabait, will they have to apply again afresh? Or is there a benefit to saying, look, those people got in on the first round, can their application be carried forward, or has a decision been made around that end of things? Thanks.
councillor Tommy.
Thank you very much for the report. Yeah, similar to councillor Gairon, the Houth Maritime Festival was incredible. I've never seen anything like it in terms of the crowds. It drew out the place. I mean, the traffic was all the way down to Clontarf. My question is around the liaison with Irish Rail, like particularly on the Sunday. I'm just wondering, did Irish Rail put on any extra darts? I had some comments that they were, you know, all the carriages were too packed, and there was queues on to them, and I'm just wondering, you know, were the numbers, did they exceed what we were expecting, or is there a bit of work to do there with regards to public transport access? Next question is regards to the Tenants and Situ scheme. Have we run out of money to be able to implement that scheme this year? As I mentioned earlier, I'm getting some queries now in relation to homes that looked like they were going to be purchased, and all of a sudden it just fell apart. So I just want an update in terms of the implementation of that scheme. Next question is in relation to the development plan and all of our local area plans, master plans, and that prioritisation list that we did. When are we next going to get an update in terms of those that we classed as the highest priority? Because I think it'd be good to get an update on that soon. Thank you.
councillor Donoghue.
Thanks, mayor. Similar to councillor Walsh, I'd like to thank the community department for the work in the stewarding of the Pride of Place awards in Skerrys and Lusk in particular. I got to go to the Skerrys one for the last hour of it, and I was lucky enough to be deputising for the Lusk event, and got to see the whole thing. It was... The scheme itself is a great opportunity for both Fingal and the community to stand back and take stock of the amount of work that goes on within our communities. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Cormac McDonagh and Rafe Costigan, who brought us through the whole process from back in May, and I've been at the two of them, there's a genuine chance I think we'll be in with a shout of winning, certainly in those two categories. Hopefully Castle Lock as well, didn't make it there. Thanks.
councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you. Like others, I'd like to thank the events team for all the events over the summer. They were truly magic, and I apologise in advance for not thanking operations and everyone else doing hard work, because they're unsung heroes, but we really see the visuals of the events when they happen. In particular, in the Houth Maritime Festival, I'd like to thank the CEO for accommodating and facilitating the sensory tent, which was a suggestion by one of our Fingal citizens. I think that was a really welcome addition to the festival. The dart issue was a problem, there was lots of people having to just abandon getting the dart home and walk, and obviously the cycle lanes all need to be replaced between Sutton and Houth as well, so that was an inconvenience. I spoke to Irish Rail, and from the conversation I had with them, they did put on extra trains, but not enough not to meet the needs that we had. Secondly, I'd just like to talk about the vacant and derelict register. It's good that we're encouraging the public to add sites. There's about a hundred thousand, we know nationally, homes vacant in the country in a housing crisis, so it's good that we're encouraging the public. But I would just want to know, is that register, it doesn't seem to be available, so people can view it before they go to bother of, could the site that they're referring to might already be there? I think we went from last year, we had eighteen listed, and now we've a hundred and forty notices sent out, so that's an improvement, but we've a lot more work to do. Again, the Tenants and Situ scheme, it seems like the targets have been met for this year, so there's a number of people who have been gone through the process, and I just wouldn't mind a comment on that. And then lastly, the Swords Quarter, I met somebody here, and they just said that the Prosper Fingal people at the end here couldn't access the village because of the works that was going on there, if that could be helped. Thanks.
councillor O'Meara.
Thanks to the CE for the report. I think it's important to share a word of congratulations on the completion of the mixed town community centre. The report from residents so far is pretty positive, and obviously looking forward to the official opening. Similarly, I think it's also fitting to mention the Snowbrough interchange, and I think that is really, you know, huge, that, you know, the resolution of traffic bottlenecks and issues, you know, I think it's something that, you know, it's really important to commend the council on that project. I would also like to mention some of the events that have taken place over this summer. I think it's really fitting to also mention that, and it would be a good idea to see if we held more events this year than last year, but in my opinion, and I think most of the events that were held this year were pretty successful. One issue that's remained outstanding for me, and I've raised it a few times, St Margaret's Parochial Hall. I would like to get a sense of where we are on that particular project. Residents are, they are keen to know what the council is planning to do, you know. It seems to be getting run down even more with water leakage, and, but I don't seem to be getting any traction on some of the representation I've put forward so far, so I would like to know exactly what we're doing. And similarly, my two colleagues have mentioned the Tenants and Situ. I think there is a major issue there. A lot of people seem to have had their hopes dashed, maybe following whatever is happening. So I think it would be a good idea to get a sense of what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hayley.
Commissioner Higley, I'd like to just add my voice to the other councillors who've thanked operations and events for their Trojan work over the summer, and I know both those departments have been particularly busy. I just wanted to raise the issue of parklets again. We got an email on the thirteenth of August, and responses to that email came from councillors from all parties and across the county to say, hang on a sec, don't just race into removing the remaining parklets. And I asked a question at the area committee we had last week, and, you know, it does seem that we're not being listened to. The answer says, you know, we will be, where businesses want to continue with street furniture licences, we'll do inspections, but the parklet structure itself will need to be removed beforehand. The practicalities for a business of saying, okay, you've got to find somewhere to store, you know, everything that they're currently using the parklet for in the interim, you know, if we're serious about improving the public realm, and outdoor dining is definitely part of that for many of the towns in Fingal, then I think we just need to slow down, I think we need to discuss it at the area committees. Obviously, this isn't currently the way to discuss it, but, you know, I asked what was the consultation with councillors, and the answer I got was, we sent you an email, and you did, but there was no engagement with the response, and so the area committee is the place to discuss this. Thanks very much.
councillor Laddie.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I want to say that I'm very pleased to see that additional staff have been recruited to the PPN. That was causing a lot of problems over the last couple of years in the community sector, and a lot of the, it caused a lot of things really going to a halt. I just want to know, are those staffing issues now fully addressed, and can we expect that the application timeline will be, that the application will be processed a lot quicker now? Thanks.
councillor Dennison.
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick question in relation to the connected hubs, the one-stop shop for remote working. And according to report that the council have concluded a survey now of the public, so I'm just wondering what the upshot of that is, and what will be the procedure from here in terms of rolling out the hubs? And if it's possible to get maybe a picture of what the reaction was across the country as well, because this was a national survey as well, I understand. Thanks.
Okay, Chief Executive and other members of the team.
Thanks, mayor, and members. The team will come in on quite a few of those questions. Just a couple of things I might deal with myself. On the Swords Cultural Quarter and Prosper Fingal, it was something that councillor Hopkins raised. We've had strong engagement with Prosper Fingal, we're determined that we don't inconvenience them insofar as possible, and we're trying to give them every help we can. Appreciate it's a longer walk, so we're definitely watching out to make sure there are no issues there. But the team in Prosper Fingal have our own contact numbers to make sure that if issues arise, we try and deal with them and fix them for them. But it is definitely an issue we're liable to... On the courthouse, just the issue around the court service, councillor Murphy, we've had strong engagement with the court service in terms of the reality of them needing to move out during the works and what would happen while they were out of the Swords premises. They weren't able to identify a suitable process, or premises during that process, but hopefully in the future if other opportunities arise, we can deal further with them in relation to it. But for now, there's no alternative building. That's not to say there won't be again. In terms of the wavin' premises and the lost jobs there in Balbriggan, absolutely, we'd be happy to do whatever's needed to look for a replacement industry there. Would you meet with the owners of Wavin', that wasn't possible during the summer because of their availability, but we're going to progress that quickly where we can. I'm going to deal with the issue of parklets as well. There's a couple of things in play. I think we can do better in the public realm than parklets. They're not permanent structures, and they do deteriorate quite quickly. I think we can build out footpaths as other areas have done nationally and internationally, but the problem we have at the moment is, when the parklets were installed, that was done quite quickly in response to the pandemic, so we just need to do some surveying to understand what we could replace them with. I don't want to see them replaced with car parking or loading bays, so where possible, that will be addressed. There's some exceptions to that, some of them were poorly located and probably not suitable for public realm. So I know the director is going to further engage with all the businesses, but the principle of public realm for outdoor dining is accepted and something we want to encourage. The question is, can we do better as a local authority such as Fingal? I suppose there are some that have got bigger in size and look pretty poor right now, and, you know, they're at the scale where other premises, other businesses are complaining about them because they're of such a scale that they're, I suppose, people are questioning how it can be possible that it's permitted. But again, in the same situation, it may be possible that some of the public realm could be used for outdoor dining. So I think that email was a little blunt, just to confirm that, and could have been more considered, and the process should have been, I suppose, put together before we communicated about it. But we don't want to have substandard structures in our towns and villages, and we do need to address some of that, and I could name a few, but I won't, that really are not appropriate and give a poor aesthetic to our local towns. So it's a balance, and I don't think that the email in August was necessarily the right way to go about things. So we've discussed that, and the team are coming up with a different way of doing things, and we'll be back to councillors in relation to it. On the Pride of Place, I suppose all I can do is wish the three projects well. I'm hopeful that they will have success, but they're already successful in their local towns and villages, and we're all proud of the work they do. I only made it to Rush myself, but I know the level of effort the volunteers put in, even just into the competition itself, is to be commended, so good luck to them in November. On the noise pilot, I might ask Mr Story to come in and just to point out, the noise action plan is on display, I think, and I think that M50 issue will likely come up again through it. On the housing information events, Mr Carroll will come in, but I presume that we'd be happy to do more than the one that's already planned. On the events itself, in terms of running more events, difficult to see how the calendar would have facilitated, because we're really busy every weekend and more for at least six months of the year, I think that's fair to say. There's a cost associated with them as well, so that, you know, that'll be part of the budget discussions in 2025. On the Houth event, I was there yesterday, it was a really successful event. I suppose it was unusual that it was combined with such good weather on Saturday, which probably contributed to the huge crowds. There were additional and bigger trains put on, but except that there were some transport issues, so we'll do a review with Irish Rail and others about it. Hard to know, I would safely say that the numbers in attendance on Saturday were beyond expectations. I think they were a little bit more balanced yesterday, so we look and review. I suppose a very hot summer's day in Houth is always a busy day, so just, we had rescheduled the maritime event from the summer to the autumn for that reason. We hit lucky with the weather this weekend, though. So again, it will always be reviewed, as all things are. And just to congratulate the event, it was a major event in a small space, and I think it was enjoyed by everybody, and I was very pleased to visit the sensory room. It did seem to fit the bill really well. It was a very relaxing space, and thanks again to the volunteers for supporting us with it. It's one thing I noticed about the event yesterday, all of the volunteers were out, they all had their own stands, and they were busy promoting the area and the work that they do, so very pleased to meet them yesterday as well. So very pleased to meet them yesterday as well. Just to talk about then, the, I think all the housing to yourselves, councillor Tormi, the development plan of the LAPs, there is an update in the chief executive's report. We're happy to, I presume, to go further to the SBCs and others when that is appropriate. On St Margaret's Parochial Hall, I did ask the team to look at priority works there so that we can have the hall transferred to the local community as quickly as possible. And I know they've done that and they hope to go to tender very quickly and hopefully get those works done so that it can be opened by the community as quickly as possible. Yes, I think we're fully staffed to the PPN, so that should address any blockages in terms of dealing with applications. We always provided resources where we had difficulty recruiting the dedicated staff, but I think we've overcome those difficulties now. And I would rely on the team then to fill in the blanks there where I haven't answered the questions.
Members, councillor Walsh, just the noise action plan, the priority action area, we've obviously got the funding from that from the department. So the study needs to be finalised and then that will come up with some works. We'll advise the members as we proceed with that. There's no further update from TOI yet. Once we have that, we'll come back to the members.
Thanks, Mayor. So thanks for all your comments regarding the Pride of Place initiatives. I'll pass on your words to the community team. I know they put in a lot of work and they enjoy it themselves as well. So it's great to see such good feedback. And in relation to plans for future housing events, yeah, thanks for raising the event that we're having this Thursday out in Tyrrellstown. And we tend to target the location and the timing of them to coincide with, you know, nearby developments. So obviously Churchfield's is a large development that we have close by, as well as another couple in Kilmartin, in Dublin 15, close to Tyrrellstown. So we are happy to have future ones. We don't have any in the pipeline at the moment, but in terms of Swords, we would hope to be going to site in Moretown at the end of this year. And then maybe following on from that, it would be appropriate to have an event to kind of coincide with that and to get people ready and set up for that. In terms of the actual process and in terms of the kind of different phases of affordable housing sales, it is a new process for the next phase, but it's the same documentation. So it might be, you know, it'll be different houses in, you know, different locations, slightly different locations, possibly different house types, house sizes. So people may or may not be interested again. But we're not going to be asking anyone to reinvent the wheel on it. They should have 90 to 95% of what they need ready to go. And it's a case of maybe updating their documentation as opposed to starting from scratch again and having to collate all that information that we need from them. In terms of tenant's issue, there's no real target for us as such, as in we are going full steam ahead at all of them. And that's the clear instruction to us. And there's a number of them closed. I think the latest figure I've seen on it was that we have closed, I think we closed 98. Eighty-nine acquisitions up to a few weeks ago. And there's another, another near 100 of them in the conveyancing process. So a number of them will, yeah, 100 in conveyancing and another 50 at the earlier stage of the assessment. So you can see the numbers are adding up. And some of them will fall away. And that's not through anyone's fault, or it's through a decision on behalf of, you know, a landlord maybe to pull away if a price can't be agreed. It's through a decision by ourselves not to proceed on the basis of the condition of a property. It's through, you know, a legal issue being encountered as part of the conveyancing process. So when we do decide not to proceed with a tenant's issue, it's a very serious decision for us to make. And we do our best to make sure that that's a last resort, because we're conscious that the people in those situations are, you know, kind of at the very last stages of the options that are available to them. So we do everything we can to get there, but we have to safeguard Fingal County Council as well and make sure that we're not just creating problems for people in the future. And we also have to comply with the legal and the land registry requirements and all the rest of us. As anyone who's gone through a house buying process, there's, you know, there's a lot of things to get in order. And when you're dealing with those kind of numbers, 100 done this year and another 150 potentially over the next six to nine months, there is going to be an attrition rate there. And I think that was all the housing ones. So thanks very much.
Mr Cunlany. Mayor, just very briefly, two quick things. councillor O'Brien, you asked about whether there was a plan regarding motor homes. The tourism strategy that we adopted last year does identify a need to look at the whole area of tourist accommodation. And part of looking at that will be to devise a plan around motor homes, if that's something that is feasible within the county. councillor Hopkins, then, the Dailly Sites Register is available to the public currently at the counter, but we are in the process of making it available online, so the members of the public can check.
There is a number of, few areas in the county where you do have people carbon their parking, their camper vans, but they're doing so in accordance with the parking bylaws. So it may be something that we have to look at going forward. And as John said, they're doing a review under the tourism strategy. With regards to the parklets, it was always our intention to build out the footpaths to accommodate for street furniture licences. And I did inform the council in the chief executive report last year on two or three occasions. So we will engage with the businesses, but we are looking to build out the footpaths and accommodate the street furniture licences. And we have, in the last three years, we've given out more casual trading licences and street furniture licences than ever before. So we're absolutely committed to facilitating the businesses. And with regards to the dog run, councillor Donnelly in St Catherine's Park, I'll get the executive park superintendent for the area to have a look at it. With regards to CCTV, councillor Quinn, sorry councillor. I think what the best thing I can do actually with regards to the CCTV is a presentation was given to the joint policing committee in the last joint policing committee meeting, setting out the CCTV, the community-based CCTV, the new legislation that's coming into place with regards to recorded devices, which will focus on the local authority and on Garde Sheikana, and also what we use CCTV licence for. So I just, that presentation is actually on the Fingal County Council website under the joint policing committee, because all of the reports and all of the presentations go in there. So it is a very, it does give a very clear outline to the members on CCTV, because we are constantly getting questions about us using CCTV. So the four parts to that, including CCTV with regards to litter is also there as well. So I'll circulate it myself, but it is there on the website as well, under the joint policing committee. All of the reports and presentations are there.
councillor, where is there a question that wasn't answered?
Something that was St Margaret's Parochial Hall. If we could get some updates on that, please.
Yeah, as I mentioned, councillor, St Margaret's Hall does require some work before it can be handed to the community. We now plan to do adequate work to allow it to reopen quite quickly. And we're going to tender for that work right now. And hopefully, within a number of months, we'll be talking to the local community about its future management.
councillor Denison.
In connection to the question on the connected hubs, I didn't hear a reply coming back on that.
The, on connective hubs?
Yes.
Can you repeat the question?
It's in page 22 of the report. And the council have now completed doing a survey on the connected hubs. And this is part of a national survey. And I'm just wondering what will be the procedure from here in terms of what we do about that information? And I just asked as well if we could have access to the national survey, just to have some idea of what the feedback was. Thanks.
Erin, do you have a question unanswered?
Confirmation, Mayor, in relation to director of operations, hands up on my part. I didn't realise that we had referred to building out of the paths in the previous reports. That was an oversight on my part. So apologies if that was missed and misrepresented. Thanks.
councillor Tormi, is it a new question or?
No, just in relation to the development plan, like the LAPs and stuff, there is two paragraphs in the chief executive's report, but could it just be maybe teased out with a little bit more information for the next month then, just to give us a sense on where things are and just to have a little bit more information than what's there? Thank you.
Yes, we'll do that.
councillor, I'll come back to you on the connected hubs survey. We contributed into it and I'm not sure yet has the national one been published, but we'll make available any information we have.
Just councillor Tormi, in relation to the development plan, the plans that were selected initially, work has begun on all of them. And Flemington will be published tomorrow for draft display. As work is continuing, we'll be looking at the next tranche and there'll be a statutory update given in April of next year as well.
Okay. Item 27, mayor's business, condemnation of racism. Proposed? Seconded, councillor Walsh, sorry.
That this council condemns unequivocally violence directed against refugees, racially motivated attacks and destruction of property and violence against the Gardaí. Furthermore, this council reaffirms its opposition to racism and support for equality, integration and inclusion, in line with the objectives of the Fingal migrant integration and cohesion strategy. I think this motion is fairly straightforward. It's the kind of motion you would normally hope that you would never, you know, it's taken as a given, everybody would support it. It's a fairly straightforward piece for us to do. And unfortunately, it's become the kind of thing that we just need to make sure that we reassert as part of the ongoing discourse. I have, I've been a migrant, been a migrant worker. I have friends who are migrants from everywhere. And we are, my life has been saved by people who migrated to Ireland to work in Ireland. And I have family who've migrated to Ireland and out of Ireland and back. And I think this is a fairly basic piece of emotion. So what I'd like to do is to agree the motion. And I think it would be a valuable assertion, particularly as we run up to political changes of the values of everybody within Fingal County Council.
councillor Burchill.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, obviously support this motion and I think it's very appropriate, because unfortunately, one of our members here is involved in this type of activity outside Tarnton Hall specifically. You know, they've been generating hostility towards migrants, you know, recording it and putting it up on their social media feeds. So that councillor on the far right should understand that the problems in our society are not caused by migrants, not caused by refugees. The great problems we have, you know, poverty, collapsing public services, housing crisis, are caused by the policies and ideology of our political establishment. You know, we've seen the rise of the far right across the EU over the past 16 years for the same reasons. 16 years of austerity, planned poverty has fuelled the rise of the far right in Germany, France, Netherlands, Italy. And we're seeing the same thing here. You know, what's happening here is capitalism is in crisis and it needs to find scapegoats. And the far right invariably emerges to point the finger at migrants, LGBTQ people and other vulnerable minorities. So while it is very important to call out racism, it's equally important to know why it's happening now and why it's rising now. And it's because capitalism is in crisis. And this is why the far right have emerged in Ireland and across the world. So the problems really are with the poverty, war, oppression, climate breakdown that capitalism is generating, not the people moving, the desperate people moving to escape its worst excesses.
Time councillor Burchill, thank you. councillor Hopkins.
Thank you for raising this important motion and just to say that I fully support it. Like yourself, I've lived in lots of different countries, including in the UK in the 90s in London, when, you know, around the Canary Wharf bombing and where people would be less than nice to you because you were Irish. So I've experienced racism as well. John is right to say that we have a lot of problems in this country with regards to our health services and homelessness and a housing crisis, but they have not been caused by immigration. And actually, they can be solved by immigration. I recently lost my father and he was cared for and loved in the medical profession in this country by lots of people who had come here from other countries. And so it's not, we all, in the last four years that I've been in this council, we have disagreed on lots of things. And we have robust debates about things, but I've never encountered racism. And in Fingal County Council, we support people who come into this country. We look after each other. And, you know, we just engage compassionately with people and I hope that we would continue to do that. Thank you.
councillor Quinlan.
So it's just in relation to the councillor's motion, I think we'd all be in an agreement that some sort of these type of events or some sort of these types of information kind of stemming online would be false information or misleading information or something to that nature or fake news. But to just head back to my question that I asked earlier on, or submitted earlier on here for the council, when a councillor asks a very straightforward question, it's very clear that we can't get very straightforward answers. And if you're looking to try and combat what you would describe as racism or the far right, I think it's very important that we get the facts on these things. And I'd also just like to direct a comment, Chair, if I may, through yourself to John Burchill. You said that I am involved in these type of things. I would like to request a redaction for the councillor's comment, trying to ascertain or to assert that I am in any way, shape or form involved with any type of criminal activity. And that's, yeah, that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
councillor Quinn.
We've had our ding-dongs over the years, Mayor, and I have to say, I fully support this motion. I've got a couple of points. I work in the health service and only recently, over the last few years I've worked there. We wouldn't have a health service without foreign nationals and without immigrants, migrants coming into the country. You simply wouldn't have it. councillor Hopkins had mentioned about losing her father. I lost my father when I was off the council. And it was the hard work and the good people of the Irish Health Service that are from outside of this country and from inside that gave my father the best of healthcare that he could during the COVID crisis. I think it's a bit rich coming from councillor Quinlan, who has got, there's that many videos of him taunting on Garde Sheikana in the Coolock area. And, you know, he's saying, a redaction, you can't redact something that's on video. Now, I'm not going to get into any ding-dong here with councillor Quinlan, but that's a fact. That's a fact. Now, I was also a migrant many, many years ago in Australia, and I was subject to racism. And I know what it's like, just like everybody else in this room that has lived abroad, what it's like to be a migrant. And we need to remember that when we're dealing with people that have come into our country to better our country and to be involved in building our country. We are 100 and, what, 100 and few years old as state? And we are still a young state that is building. And we have people coming into this country that are adding value to this country. And we need to remember that. Thank you.
So under standing orders, I have, I'll read them there. No member may make false statements. No member may make false statements, impudent proper motives or use offensive, unbecoming words in reference to any member of the council, employee of the council or any of the person. Any member having made such statements or used such objectional words and not explaining or retracting the same or offering apologies when requested by the mayor to do so shall be called upon by the mayor to withdraw from the meeting. Mr. Quinlan has suggested that you're in breach of this standing order, councillor Burchill. I would ask you to either explain or retract.
councillor Quinlan identified himself there. If something is going to be redacted, I'd like him to redact his videos from Thornton Hall and elsewhere. So I'm not in breach of that standing order because I didn't identify anybody.
Thank you councillor Burchill. I adjudicate that you're not in breach of that standing order as a stance, thank you. councillor John Walsh.
Thanks, Mayor, and I fully support the motion. I think this motion is very straightforward, as you said. It's about standing with vulnerable people who've been subjected unfairly to racially motivated attacks. It's about standing with the Gardaí who've been physically attacked and verbally abused for doing no more than their duty. And it's about challenging false and dangerous narratives that have been put into the public domain about refugees. I'm lucky enough to be the chairperson of a board of management in Dublin fifteen for a primary school which has forty-four separate nationalities, all working together in harmony in a diverse and inclusive environment. And I think that represents the true face of Dublin fifteen. Like other members, I've been cared for in hospital by staff born outside Ireland. I was very fortunate in last January to be cared for by medical staff, ninety percent of whom were born outside Ireland. And I think there needs to be a full appreciation of the richness and diversity that new communities have brought to our country. I think the vast majority of us recognise that. I just want to say, Mayor, I fully respect the right to protest. People have every right to protest. The burning of property is not protest. Violent attacks against vulnerable individuals are not, is not a protest. And physical attacks in Gardaí are not protests. So I think we need, as a council, given what has been happening recently, to reaffirm basic principles of equality, inclusion and respect for diversity in absolutely unequivocal terms. And I think this motion is really important to do that. I might say very briefly, I realise time is short, refer to the heritage of the Irish in the United States. In the eighteen hundreds, a party was set up called the American Party, known colloquially as the No-nothings. They were anti-immigrant, anti-Catholic and especially anti-Irish. And they were called No-nothings because they were to refuse to give directions to refugees or immigrants, many of whom were Irish. They were designed to maintain the status and power of traditional Anglo-Saxon Americans. And we have some No-nothings in Ireland today. And we need to disassociate ourselves from them and say they do not represent the Irish people. And we need to reject unequivocally racist myths and racist attacks.
I am councillor.
Commend the motion, thank you, Mayor.
councillor O'Donoghue.
Thank you, Mayor. I back the motion also. Mainly, I have friends in the Gardaí. These are normal people, normal families who put themselves on the front line every day to keep all of our communities safe. And the abuse that I've seen them take over the past couple of months ain't on. The Gardaí don't make policy, they enforce it. This somehow seems to get lost. That position is absurd, like it makes no sense. Logically, it falls apart as soon as it's examined. It's wet cake. I would imagine that that is little solace to the families of those officers who serve on the front line though. This is democracy. Those with concerns on any issue can protest without attacking, abusing Gardaí or burning buildings. Once that happens, that's when pragmatism, rationalism and relativism are lost and that's how democracy dies.
councillor Graves.
Yeah, look, I'm more than happy to support this motion. I think it should be given that we're all opposed to violence against anybody. But particularly in situations where there are very vulnerable people that are arrived in our country looking for support. I do think that there's a lack of communication to communities that are living in particular areas and that's causing local anger. But that's more about, it doesn't feed into the scenes that we've seen. It's people that are frustrated because they don't know what's happening in their areas. And a number of these groups have written to councillors, disassociating themselves from the visible protests that are taking place, but still trying to raise their concerns. I remember being in Birmingham as, you know, I was quite young at the time, staying with family who had moved over there because they had no choice. And it was the time, nineteen seventy-four, the time of the Birmingham bombings. And there was people that had been living there for years, Irish people, and they were treated like animals because the assumption was there that, you know, every single one of them had planted these bombs. And we know the history that happened there. They got it wrong, very badly wrong. So yes, we definitely need to support people that are coming into our country. We need to support the Gardaí who are on the front line and who are doing a job that they don't expect to be doing every day of the week, but that's what it is. The other side of it is we're losing out in our own communities because the numbers are all being moved into targeted areas. But, you know, well done, I am happy to support this motion.
councillor Healy.
I'm Keirleigh, I'm very happy to support this motion. And it's kind of shocking really to think that it should be necessary. That's the bit that's the most difficult for, a lot of it for me. It's been very well crafted. It's focused exactly on the issues of racism, racially motivated attacks, destruction of property, violence against the Gardaí. And it's pulled on the positive side, the work that this council has been doing and has put together in a migrant integration and cohesion strategy, not just out of the last couple of months, but that it's been working on for, you know, at least a decade if I remember correctly. And I think it's really important that we agree this unanimously, Graham Hoggart.
councillor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, obviously supporting the motion. But once the motion is passed and expected will be passed, I'd like to think that we could pass it unanimously here tonight. But when we pass the motion and when we leave here, when we're out in our communities, we, by and large, we are respected individuals, public representatives, people sometimes look to us, for example, we need to challenge, we need to be seen to challenge. When we're out and about socially, when we're in pubs and we hear comments, we need to challenge. When we're at the doorsteps, when somebody says, you know, makes a comment and we're tempted to say, well, and just walk away. And sometimes when you're looking for a vote in the last kind of election, you might be tempted not to challenge, but we need to challenge. We need to stand up and we need to be seen to live the spirit of this motion, thank you.
councillor O'Brien.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thanks for bringing the motion. And it is, as other members have said, it's kind of, it's a pity that, you know, this kind of sentiment is not just a given anymore. So it is important that we as a council reaffirm our stance. I think one of the, one of the best, most enjoyable aspects of my year doing the, doing the role that you're currently in was kind of getting a much better and wider understanding of Fingal and what makes Fingal because it takes you, it's a job that takes you out of the bubble of your own LEA and brings you in contact with all sorts of different groups all across the county. And, you know, one thing that has always kind of stuck with me since is that the fact that, you know, we have the most diverse county in the country here in Fingal and people who've come in from all sorts of different backgrounds have contributed to those communities all across Fingal in a really, really positive way. And it's really, really kind of sad and upsetting that so many of these people now, because of the rise of particular elements, quite nasty elements, don't feel safe in a lot of our communities anymore. Or many of them don't feel safe. Many of them are being made to feel unwelcome. And that is certainly not the majority view that's held across Fingal. But it's certainly the view of a very vocal minority that needs to be stood up to and I fully support your motion, thanks, Mayor.
councillor Laddie.
Thank you, Mayor. Very happy to support this motion. I'd like to commend you, Mayor, for bringing it to the floor. Just a couple of points I want to make because a few councillors, councillor Ryan and others spoke about the need for the council to kind of stand up in this area. And in my observations of the debate around this whole issue, one thing that I've kind of found that probably the biggest myth out there or one of the biggest myths or lies, let's call it what it is, is that somehow people of colour or people from a non-traditional Irish background somehow get prioritised on the housing list. And that is, that is an invention, that's not true. There's no scenario, there's absolutely no circumstances in which that ever happens. And I think the Fingal Housing Department are in a very good position to dispel that myth as our, as our local authorities around the country. Just want to make another brief point as well. Extremists on the right don't need any kind of excuse to blame migrants. They'll blame migrants no matter what. We have a housing shortage at the minute, but if we didn't have a housing shortage, they'd be blaming them on something else. And I just think we should be cognizant of that and not fall into any trap, any traps by the far right. Like I said, they don't need excuses, so don't give them one.
councillor Anno Mara.
Thank you, Mayor. I was a little bit unsure whether to make a contribution to this or not, but I suppose it would be remiss of me not to acknowledge the fact that this is a very important motion. And listening to all my colleagues who have spoken in support of the motion, I think that really means a lot to me and the general Fingar County Council community. You know, obviously I've been a subject, you know, of racism and I know how palpable, you know, members of the community feel about these issues and incidents. You know, I have young children who would go out, come back home and haven't experienced racism, you know, would be very anxious, you know, of what they want to do next. And there is that tension in the, in the community in general, it must be said. You know, especially being a councillor in an area where we know the diversity is, you know, can be felt. And it's been a very peaceful and wonderful community. However, you know, of recent, we've all observed, you know, these incidents and it's been sneaking in. And for me, I think this motion really goes a long way to show that the representatives of our community, especially Fingar County Council, wholly stand shoulder to shoulder, you know, to challenge and to object to, you know, these incidents happening. And it's to that extent that I want to applaud and I want to thank you for bringing up this motion, thank you very much.
Understanding orders, after all councillors have come in, the mayor may allow somebody to speak for a second time. There's no obligation to allow somebody to speak for a second time. So everybody who wishes to has contributed once and I shall only be allowing everyone to contribute once. I will speak finally. I think it would be remiss of me not to give the credit for the drafting of this motion where it's due. And it's not to me, it's to councillor John Walsh. It was originally a joint motion from a number of councillors from the Labour Group. But we felt, or I felt it was important to try and make sure that it was, that it was presented and that people would have the opportunity to speak on it as, you know, and not to get pushed back on the agenda. And only for it being solely by the mayor was that possible. So people who would have liked to jointly propose it were unable to do so. I am moved by councillor Anno Mara's contribution there in particular. And I have had to deal with the distress of people I've known for twenty years being subject to racist abuse on a train that they never had before. What they do or why they came here or what they did or anything is immaterial. If you're sitting on a train, you shouldn't be subject to racist abuse. And what's happening is that there are vicious lies that are no different than the lies that were being perpetrated in the nineteen thirties. Lies in many cases that are being funded by bad actors in other countries to sow division and hate. And they unfortunately are pushing things that we've got to push back on. So welcome all the contributions and support of the motion. And I'll give a chance for the room to agree the motion. Is the motion agreed? Are there, are there any objections to the motion? So that motion is agreed unanimously by Fingal County Council. Thanks for your, thanks for agreeing it unanimously. Twenty-eight conference report. Sorry. Conference board, item A, AILG elected members September to November twenty twenty-four training programme noted. Item B, AILG UCC climate crisis local government course for council for enrolment noted. Item C, the Irish Council for Social Housing Finance and Development Conference twenty twenty-four, sixteenth to seventeenth of October noted. And item D, decarbonising Dublin summit Thursday, fourteenth of November twenty twenty-four, Camna Court Hotel, Dublin city centre noted. Correspondence twenty-nine, A through to E, do I have to go through them individually? A through to E noted. And there's no departmental ministerial correspondence. So let's bring us through to motion number thirty-one, councillor Bowland breaches of planning permission at the DAA. Councillor Bowland is not in the chamber, he's coming. Your motion councillor Bowland. Seconding councillor Newman.
I think that's the second time I've managed that trick. I want to thank the CE for the very comprehensive report which she has already provided during her CE's report. This is actually the second anniversary of the first time I stood to speak about this issue, which was on the twelfth of September two years ago. And the North Runway had only just recently been opened. But it was pertinent to me that there was something seriously wrong. And I had raised it with the manager of the airport in the morning of the twelfth. And I was told it would be all sorted out within a couple of weeks. A long couple of weeks. And we've seen the council take enforcement action. And I'm sure this hasn't been taken lightly. But it's been taken having account of the distress which has been caused to the community, but equally having account of the law of the land and the planning laws and the need for enforcement. If we were to apply as individuals the approach of the DAA to planning, we could sort out the housing problem in a flash. We could all build shalies in our back gardens. Because that's how irresponsible the DAA approach to the planning issue is. When we've taken them to court, they've sought adjournment after adjournment. They're not ready to settle or to face the music, to recognise the community concern of noise, vibration and disruption to their lives. Earlier this evening, I believe you all received a video, email, an email containing a video which was compiled by pilots showing what the actual route of the five nautical miles is. And I think that when you watch that, you will understand much more clearly what is at stake. We have had the argument about the cap being lifted. The cap has been at thirty-two. The cap has been at 32 million for a number of years. The DAA have now decided to apply for permission to raise the cap and want a magic wand waived. But if they were running their business correctly, they would have realised they were coming to a point where they were potentially going to exceed the 32 million and they could have applied in time for permission to be granted or denied. But instead, they simply waited till the last moment and then adopted, as if it were bully boy tactics, to push through the cap. And now they tell us that they've no option but to honour the cap being broken because the IAA have given slots. They're hiding behind one body to abuse the rules and regulations which this council is obliged to see enforced. I think that if they go ahead and breach the cap, then the state should fine them twice the value of the money that they receive for everyone who lands in Ireland over the 32 million figure. I appreciate the fact that it's a semi-state company, so it really is money just circulating within the larger economy. But a clear show has to be made that it is not acceptable if you're a semi-state company, big business, doesn't matter who you are, you're obliged to recognise and accept the planning rules which govern your operation. The planning departments, as the CE mentioned earlier on, has built a policy based on the National Aviation Policy, the Development Plan and the Local Area Plan. I want to commend all the executives to continue with the enforcement policy and planning I think that we as a council must stand up in the interests of democracy, because that's what this is, it is an attack on democracy, on the rule of law. And we cannot allow to give way to a semi-state who is a dominant force in the economy and in turn who is supported quite recklessly by other corporate bodies. And I really believe that we as a council have to push this on to conclusion and to ensure that our planning department is supported. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I fully support the motion, I just seconded there. And I'm not going to go over all the things that councillor Bowland did go over, but certainly the, you know, breaking the cap and probably getting 10 euro per passenger, the DAA, and that amounts to a lot of money. I'm not saying it's all profit, but I don't know if it's in our gift to fine the DAA a portion of that money, because that certainly needs to happen. Not that that would bother them a whole lot. But the DAA have always said they're going to challenge the 2007, I think, planning conditions which was applied to the North Runway. And, you know, it's fair enough, like you know me, but we can't just accept, you know, a delegation and then say, well, I'm going to challenge you 20 years down the road. But in the meantime, we've had, I've been on the St Margus to All Community Liaison Group, and I do recall the flight paths that were spoken about, which entail going out straight to about 3,000 feet, deviating off to whatever degree, 15 or 10, I'm not too sure. But, you know, if we don't enforce those conditions, that planning permission, we're going to end up in a bit of a quagmire, because here we are now, the DAA promoted a flight path, the council's own land and planning allowed developments based on those noise contours. And now they're going to deviate away from that, so we're finding a lot of other people coming in into a noise zone. So I don't know how we can actually square that one. So I feel we're obliged, and I commend the chief executive and the planning department for the action they've taken, but they need to continue with this action to make sure that the DAA comply, because they've been running roughshod over this, over the communities for so many years with different chief executives. And just the other day, the chief executive acknowledged they got it wrong with regard to the flight paths at a meeting, I wish that were them.
Councillor Geir.
Yeah, I support the motion, it's not confirmed, but I support the motion within the report. I'm saddened in a way, you know, I support the growth of Dublin Airport, I want to see development in the region, I don't want to see it go to Cork. And I would do everything to do that. And part of the thing that we did was in 2020, we brought in a local area plan which allowed for the increase of the numbers to 40 million. And the DAA took three and a half years to then apply for the appropriate planning permission. And I think it's a pity that the relationship between two such important bodies within an area, Fingal County Council and the DAA, they have somewhat deteriorated. I've been here for 10 years, I've never seen it at such a low ebb, and the personnel here haven't changed. And all we've done is apply the proper planning laws. So the fact that a planning permission comes in for 11 aspects and the cap thrown in, to me, that questions the judgement of the planners in the DAA, where they should have come in three years ago, when they knew the cap was going to be an issue and had these discussions and gone through the process. So I commend, which not something I'd normally do, our planners. I think we've done it right and I think it's important that we continue to do it right. And by saying that, I'm not anti-airport or anti-DAA, I'm just measuring the facts and pointing them out as they are. We brought in the plan in 2020, it's not our fault, it took nearly four years for it to be submitted to us. And then when it came in, and then they got six months to address the additional items or the further information, they looked for a two-month extension. Where's the urgency or where's the competency?
Time there, councillor Geir.
Thanks, Mayor, apologies for overrunning.
Things are no other speakers. I think, you know, I put out a statement in the media regarding this myself, but the underlying thing is this is a quasi-judicial function. There are things about area plans or development plans in relation to the airport that I might not support, and there are things I think that are great. But kind of the implication in the attempt to sort of think that there's some way that the planning authority can do anything other than enforce planning is absurd. Even if the DAA have put themselves on a path where they're driving the wrong way down the runway, or sorry, down the motorway, and they can't get off until the next exit, if they're still stopped driving down the wrong way down the motorway, they're still going to be called to account. They don't get a pass just because the next exit's two kilometres away. And the point that we have, and it's well made by others, is that, and it's not the current chief executive of the DAA, it's one of the first questions I asked a chief executive of the DAA was what planning mechanism they proposed to use to get by some of the regulations that we're now pursuing on enforcement. And the answer I received was that they were going to do it legally. And they were going to do it legally, legally, and very legally indeed. But there was no response, this is more than five years ago. So collectively, as a corporate body, the DAA have been aware that they were on a path to breaching planning regulations. And I don't know what happens internally, but they find themselves now in breach and looking to be excused because there are other regulations now that they have got themselves in a position where they've breached. And I suppose the last thing I would say is the DA are suggesting they have no control over these things. And yet every time we see an increase in passenger numbers, an increase in routes, an increase in the viability of the airport, the DAA are taking credit. They're saying, yeah, isn't it great, we're growing the airport like Billio. Well, if you're responsible for growing the airport at that state, then you're also responsible and solely responsible for being in breach of planning. And we'll see what the outcome is, and I'm sure there's plenty more to see here.
Mr Bowland.
And I appreciate the speakers. In fact, the first time that I spoke on the subject, I was the only one in the chamber to speak. At the last meeting of the old council, virtually everybody in the room spoke about their annoyance against the DAA. The area committee called on the government to sack the board of the DAA in essence for incompetence, and I think that that was not a bad suggestion. Thank you very much.
Item 32 was withdrawn, thanks councillor Quinn. Sorry, apologies. Apologies councillor Tormey.
Away with the fairies. Okay, the reason that I wanted to propose this motion is because I recognise the council will go and clear graffiti when it's on public property, on signage, they've gone out and done some favours for me in the past as well. But there is a big issue with graffiti on properties that are visible to the public and I have tried to pursue this through various avenues. And I get these kinds of responses back in terms of what is being done, but I still think that we need, like, there's a lot more that we could be doing. So for example, my understanding is, is in terms of like litter fines, if graffiti is visible in a public space, that actually the owner of that could be done with a litter fine. I then tried to initiate that process and then it just started hitting brick walls because it wasn't being pursued. We offer graffiti grants to small community groups to do, you know, community paintings or whatever. But like, if you actually just go along the dart from Hought towards the city centre, you go through industrial estates and a lot of those have graffiti on the side of those big buildings. And I have contacted the owners to ask, will you have your buildings painted? And they're like, no, because that's a waste of our money and it just gets graffitied over again. And I'm just wondering, could we not review this whereby instead of giving grants or money to small community groups, that we actually maybe look at tidying up our public space so that when we have people going through graffiti-ridden areas, for example, like the industrial estates on the rail line, that actually, you know, paint can be given or the council can facilitate maybe a once-off or twice-off, because I know sometimes it can get repetitive, but that we are initiating and being a bit more active on this issue to try and tidy up the area and, because it's just awful, some of it along the rail lines particularly, yeah, as I said, around the Bald Doyle part. So I greatly appreciate the members' support on this to initiate some sort of review for it to be looked at and to be brought back to us with a good proposal on tidying up the graffiti around the place. Thank you.
Councillor Donnelly.
Thanks very much, I'd like to support this motion. I actually thought about will I come in and speak on this or not, because I'm actually sick to death listening to myself talk about graffiti around the place. And I'm sure the operations department are equally sick to death listening to me. One of the major bugbears I have is the utility companies, in particular DSB, who will not clean graffiti off their infrastructure, and they say that they will do it during their routine maintenance. DSB made 868 million euro last year. Eight hundred and sixty-eight million. And we have their infrastructure all across Fingal and further afield full of graffiti. And we're being told that they'll get to it when they can, if they can. And that just is not good enough. And I think we need to be a lot firmer with all of the utility companies to have their infrastructure in our public realm. Thank you.
Councillor Walsh.
Yeah, great. Just want to thank councillor Tormey for bringing forward the motion. I think I've had similar motions at the Dublin 15 Area Committee and I know councillor Donnelly has as well. Listen, I think there's definitely a lot of good work being done by voluntary bodies such as the Tidy Towns, but it can't just be left to voluntary groups such as Tidy Towns to clean graffiti on walls or on utility boxes where those are not in public ownership or where they're not in the ownership of the council. Now, I want to acknowledge that wherever I've brought graffiti to the attention of the operations department, that has been cleaned. And that's an initiative taken by the operations department and reflects very well on them. But utility boxes, and I absolutely agree with councillor Donnelly, the level of graffiti, the scale of the graffiti on utility boxes in many parts of Dublin 15 is an absolute disgrace. ESP and AIR seem to be completely unaccountable and indifferent to the amount of dirt and graffiti that has accumulated on their boxes over many years. I think that's something that the council needs to take more drastic action on. And I know efforts have been made through Clarks of Works to get these companies to be more responsible, but in fact, they have proved really irresponsible in terms of ongoing maintenance. And I think what probably needs to be considered is where these companies give a bond to the council when they originally put in utility boxes, that it's a higher bond, firstly, it's not a minimal bond, and they don't get the bond back unless they actually provide for ongoing maintenance. Or where appropriate, actually, removal, because that's also an issue of redundant utility boxes that are also defaced with graffiti. But just saying, I mean, Llanfairstown Tidy Towns, Casenoch Tidy Towns and many others do fantastic work removing graffiti. In Casenoch Tidy Towns, that's basically one person who is the one-person graffiti team and he goes around systematically removing graffiti. That's not sustainable and it's not appropriate and it puts an incredible kind of expectation and burden on one individual. So we need a much more systematic and structured approach to it. Thanks very much.
Mr Daley.
Very much, Chair. I'm listening to everything that the councillors are saying, and certainly Dublin 15, it is an issue and we have written to ESP and telecom Aaron. But if I might suggest, maybe a review of it under the SPC might be, if the councillors were willing to, I'd put it on the work programme for the SPC. If the members are...
My issue for the environment.
And well, I'll be working with the director, Dave Storey.
Yeah, because I said my issue is with operations.
Oh, it's with Dave.
Sorry. Councillor Tormey.
Yeah, no, I'm happy, I wanted reviewed, so yeah, through an SPC is appropriate. And yeah, but as I said, it's bigger than just operations, it's looking at litter fines and supporting private, you know, industrial estates to tidy up as well. Thank you.
A match made in heaven. Item 34, councillor Donnelly, survey of cycle lanes five years or older. opposed?
Opposed.
And seconded by councillor Hanifey.
Thank you. Just to start by saying, there is some fantastic work being undertaken with new cycle infrastructure and various different activities. I know that some of these activities are really, really popular in Dublin 15. The Learn to Cycle track in the Millennium Park is absolutely amazing, I know we've got two of them in Fingal. The Balance Bike Buddies course, the little kids on a Saturday morning was brilliant. Sofa the saddle course, Fingal Tri-Bike Initiative, and that's to name a few, there's some really great work going on. Unfortunately, a lot of the cycle network in Dublin 15 was constructed around 2009 and is now reaching end of life, with many footpaths and cycle paths needing replacement due to failures of both the tar-bearing surface and the substrate. One of the areas I've submitted recently in a CRM was Younger Distributor Road. And Fingal Active Travel Campaign came to me with about 10 or 11 different issues of the cycling infrastructure around Dublin 15, and I imagine it's the same across the whole of the world. And I imagine it's the same across the whole of Fingal. And this was, you know, tree roots have caused lumps and bumps, holes, exposed utility covers, et cetera. And it seems that we are firefighting in terms of the maintenance of these cycle lanes. And whilst I welcome the response from the manager in that all cycle lanes and related infrastructure in Fingal County Council are inspected on a regular basis, that's not my experience. My experience is that councillors or residents submit CRMs or emails when it comes to residents about certain parts of the cycling infrastructure, and then it gets fixed. I know this would cost a lot of money. But I really don't think it's a big ask to survey all the cycle lanes that are over five years old. On the thirteenth of August this year, I received the following response from the operations department, where a request for the service of a cycle lane to be addressed. And it said, I wish to advise that the area has been inspected and the worst affected areas will be scheduled for maintenance works in 2024. The area will also be listed for possible inclusion on the twenty-five programme of works, where areas will be prioritised. And I have to say, that's one of the best responses I've received, and it's filled with terms like worst affected areas, possible inclusion, and areas being prioritised. So if the cycle lanes and related infrastructure is inspected on a regular basis, do we have a priority list for repair? And just to note as well, before I finish quickly, e-scooters are allowed on cycle paths. These vehicles are very small wheels. It doesn't take much for them to go over when they hit a stone or a lump or a bump in the path. So I think this is, this motion is very reasonable, and I'd like it agreed. Thank you.
Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, thanks. I'd like to support the motion. And just to mention that it's not just cycle lanes that are five years or older. I can mention a cycle lane that we put in probably two and a half years ago, that the vast majority of the poles are missing. And I had asked for them to be replaced before the school opening September 2023. They hadn't arrived. Then I was told in December last that they were in the depot waiting to be put in. So when we put in the infrastructure, and it was torture putting in that infrastructure, meetings and pushback from residents. And now we have it, and we don't have the poles to protect the cycle lane. So we absolutely, if we're putting in the infrastructure, we have to have a facility to maintain it. Thank you.
Councillor O'Brien.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just to speak in support of the motion as well. Councillor Hopkins touched on the more recent infrastructure that we've put in. But also then, we've, in certain areas, what I suppose would have been put in as cycle lanes at the time, footpath-adjacent cycle lanes, and the one that springs to mind always is the network that goes through Holywell up into Airside. I think I put down a question for the council, because it's not in my LEA, about two and a half years ago, just about the state of that surface and whether any remedial work will be carried out. And today's, and it's just an example, that there hasn't been any movement on that. I think it's probably an opportune time for us as councillors to say that we should have a particular-headed item within our works programmes to deal with this. And we should commit to a minimum amount, maybe from the road servicing budget, so that there is a specific focus in each LEA work programme on maintenance and upgrade of cycle lanes. Like, you couldn't actually now, though, the cycle lanes that are referred to in Airside, you couldn't reference them as cycle lanes in any way, shape, or form. They're cut up from roots and so forth. They just haven't been maintained. So there does seem to be kind of a bit of a disconnect between the provision of the infrastructure and how it's maintained going forward. And we need to, I suppose, really tackle that within this council term. Because at the end of the day, this infrastructure is for safety, you know, it protects human life, very vulnerable road users, and it's important that we treat it as such. So I would suggest that each of the area committees do commit to a minimum amount of funding within the works programme to deal with it. Thanks, Mayor.
Councillor Yeoman.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I support the motion. And I understand that the operations, you say here, the operations maintain on a day-to-day basis. But, I mean, operations can't be everywhere and do everything. So, you know, where I live in River Valley, there's a need for these bollards that are kind of knocked over in different places, need to be replaced. And I think maybe we should look at having a firm go around that will actually replace them. And I don't know, maybe we have, because you can't expect the operations department to get involved in taking them up and putting down some new ones there. But, you know, the surface is reasonably okay. But the bollards and the caravan, which that's another day's work. But certainly from a bollard point of view, I think they need to be not left to the resident report or to the council to report. I think we have to be proactive, because it's a safety issue for children on bikes, isn't it? And if we have, if we let something deteriorate, something that is a signal to motorists to not move in on this area because it's a cycleway, I think that's really important, as we all do. So I would appreciate if maybe that could be done in the River Valley area, just possibly. I know I haven't been in touch with you, Miss Daly, on that one, but...
Councillor Humphries.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks councillor Donnelly for raising this motion. It is an important motion, and it's, we're kind of, I kind of looked at it as two different strands. One was the maintenance, but also, as has been touched on before, the design. There's an awful lot of our cycle paths in this county that are of an old design, where they're adjacent to a footpath, which is causing issues as bikes are getting faster. We have now electric bikes, and we also have scooters as well. But it's not even, it's even kind of conflicting with kind of our age-friendly strategy, where it is making it more difficult for older people to feel comfortable and safe walking on footpaths. Because I've met many that have been bumped into, knocked into, and knocked over by someone that's cycling what is actually a cycle lane, but it does no way distinguish between the past and... So we do have to look at upgrading our existing kind of cycle infrastructure. And I believe that we should certainly look at doing that before we build out any more. But that's probably an argument for a different time. And then, as we do have more of an infrastructure, it is going to put more of a pressure on the programme of works that each area committee has. It is within the discretion of the director to transfer up to fifteen per cent of any money allocated to a new project within his department. I certainly would hope, as we enter the budget discussions, that if it comes standard, that a percentage of any money received for a new project will be diverted into the maintenance and upgrading of old infrastructure going forward. Thank you.
Councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to support the councillor's motion. I look back my own notes, and I actually had the same motion. I've actually had a couple of motions very similar submitted to local area council meetings, and sat in front of numerous managers over the years in relation to cycle lanes. I know we have the new cycle lane for the Hartstown-Huntstown Ring Road. But I do think we do need to peel it back in the sense of look at the cycle lanes around the Angar LEA. The motions are there, they're there to be seen. I mean, there's some cycle lanes up around Angar. I actually only have a couple of CRMs in at the moment there as well, where they are actually dangerous. You know, we are asking children, parents, to get up on bicycles. How can they get up on bicycles when it's not safe? To some of the cycle lanes, the weeds are dreadfully coming through them. There's gaps in the side of them. I remember submitting a CRM there about fifteen months ago, two years ago, where a parent got on to me where the child's bike got caught in the side of the cycle lane. Still the same. I know we have the Clonie to Blanchestown cycle lane on the way. We had an online meeting there a while ago, and I did bring that up. I just said, these projects have taken far too long. We have the Cluncilleta-Damis Town project as well, still sitting there. We really need to start moving on these projects and get them moving. I'm hearing about them for the last ten years, and it's just really at this stage now, it's just ridiculous. I know it comes down to funding and money, but we're being told that Active Travel have lots of money, and the government have lots of money. So can we just send more money back into the departments that need it, whether it's operations or whoever it is? Because some of the cycle lanes are not fit for purpose, they really aren't. So I would support the motion. I just think there needs to be an all-over audit, maybe, of each area as well, so we can actually finalise what needs to be done as well. Thank you.
Councillor Quinn.
Yeah, I'd support the motion also from councillor Donnelly. Just one of the issues that had been raised only recently was where we have councillor Humphries has mentioned there about the footpaths beside the cycle lanes. But one of the unintended consequences of this is that we have shrubbery and bush along the side of the footpath, which is overgrown. So we have situations where people are walking out into the cycle lanes, and people are cycling along. And we have some collisions, there has been a couple of collisions between Bell Rodery and Bell Brigant that I've been made aware of. But I think that we should allocate a percentage of the budget to the maintenance of our cycle lanes, especially with the enormous investment in our active travel plan. I think we need to protect what we put in. Thank you very much.
Councillor O'Leary.
Thank you. I'd like to support the motion. So there's an issue in Scarrys, from the Scarrys Educate Together School, Eurospar. Down into Scarrys, we have a cycle lane. Looks great in theory, but in practice, it's a different matter. It's a bit like one of those bog roads where the road looks good until you get onto it, and it's humpy, humpy, the humpy-dumpy, the foundation has collapsed in certain parts. So I was out in Utrecht on a couple of trips, and we had a discussion with engineers out there. And there is a new foundation system that doesn't happen anymore. And this particular cycle lane needs to be, just basically needs to be resurfaced and a proper foundation put back in. So my question is, is there a government fund for this sort of stuff? Because it'll be an onerous task if we review the whole county, and every other county in Ireland does it. So maybe there should be a government fund for it. Well, I think there should anyway, or at least a fifty-fifty. We put up fifty per cent, and the government put up fifty per cent. And we're heading into a budget now, and it's an ask that should be put forward in the budget. I'm talking about the government budget. So I would ask that the cycling lane in Scarrys be looked at, because the kids going to the school with the mummies and daddies who want to use the cycles are cycling on the road. So it's an issue, it's definitely an issue, and we need to have a system for looking at it on a regular basis, as the motion is calling for. Thank you.
Councillor Hayley.
Margaret Kelly, I very much welcome the motion. And in the response, there's reference to cycle lanes and related infrastructure being inspected on a regular basis. And I take it that that's by, you know, us as a council. The other source of information, and it is mentioned, the CRM requests from members of the public or elected members. The other source of information is the public. And I wonder, can we improve or make it easier for people to feed back in, in terms of what's needed, what's damaged, and what needs maintenance? Looking at, there's a collision tracker, an Active Travel Collision Tracker at collisiontracker.ie, which is initially set up by the Dublin Enquirer. And it does, actually, it's not just collisions, it also provides for reporting of near misses and hazards. Now, there's not that many hazards written in, but hazards are, you know, things that we would instance here in terms of things that haven't been properly designed or properly maintained, or routes pulling up the pavements. So just a suggestion that we might find a way to crowdsource a bit more of the information that we need in order to prioritise maintenance and improvements. Thank you.
Councillor Graves.
I'm happy to support the motion. I do think that cycle lanes and the infrastructure differs from one area to the other. So it's probably not a one-size-fits-all. One of the major issues that we have on the Rackinstown Road, for example, is the grass is cut along the park area. It goes into the cycle lane, which is right beside it, and it's impossible, like, it can't be used. It actually turns it into a dangerous cycle lane. And I know I've logged calls, and I know members of the public have logged calls, but it's a couple of days before the grass is cleared away, it's rained on, it becomes just lethal, you know? So I think maybe it's an area-by-area, you know, some of it is, the surface up there is fine. I still have questions around the roundabout and a few issues, and I await the safety audit report. But on a maintenance, on, you know, look at a maintenance, sorry, it would be more the day-to-day stuff, so the cutting of the grass, the impact that's having on the cycle lanes as they are, rather than there being anything wrong with the infrastructure that's put in place. There are a few, I think, of the bollards that have been hit and haven't been replaced, and they're like that for ages. So I don't know how regularly they're inspected and repaired. And I'm not sure whether that lies with operations or whether it lies with Active Travel. I thought you might say that. Thanks.
Councillor Walsh.
Yeah, thanks to councillor Donnelly. I fully support the motion, a really important debate. I suppose, listen, it should go without saying that repairing and maintaining cycle lanes now is as important as regular maintenance of footpaths, about which we also get plenty of complaints. But I think what certainly has happened is perhaps the first cycle lanes are the older ones that have been put in before the current surge of funding for Active Travel, which I really welcome. They, I think they have, to some extent, been neglected, or at least they haven't got the same level of attention as new projects. And I think we need to remedy that. I agree with what councillor O'Brien said, that we need to address this within the programme of works. There seems to be plenty of funding for new projects, and perhaps there's a gap in terms of maintenance for existing cycle lanes. And maybe, sure, maybe Active Travel would transfer some money across the programme of works, I don't know. Thanks very much.
From my own point of view, before I invite the directors in, I want to thank the council and Active Travel for supplying a mayoral cargo bike from a company which I'd been using. Somebody should check whether there's BIK on it, I put that on record. I cycled into the Mansion House today for the climate launch. I thought it was important, because, you know, people, one of the things is always, accusations levelled at us is that we sort of are strongly in favour of things, but we'll get the car, or we'll do whatever. And I cycle out then to hear, there are events you can't make. You know, it's hard to get from Bell Brigant to Blanchestown, back to Swords and over to Port Marne in one go. So there will be times where we use other motion. But on my cargo bike travels, there's been a few bits of older infrastructure, and some bits of not-so-old infrastructure that I think, sometimes with the ones that have been constructed as part of other planning permissions, they're a little bit disjointed, and it's very difficult sometimes when you're cycling along to realise where you're supposed to go, or it funnels you on to a hundred dead-end metres where you're sharing the space, as councillor Humphrey said, with pedestrians, whether they like it or you like it. And whatever about on a scooter or an ordinary bike, careering down an electric cargo bike on a semi-pedestrianised thing is not great. And the alternative sometimes of being halfway between a bus lane or somewhere else is not great. I suppose, in terms of maintenance, we've started to put in, and I think from the councillor O'Leary's question is most pertinent, because I genuinely believe that from national government down, funding capital infrastructure is always easy, funding operational things, because we all get to declare something open. But something ongoing being maintained is less good. So I look forward to the responses. I support the motion, and I hope to come back with my own report of little places that I think we could improve the access, particularly to the airport, for people who are cycling routes for the first time, essentially. Because that's usually where the hard bit, you can learn to cycle or go a longer way, but when you're going something the first time is where you'll make the mistake. Mr. Storey apparently wants to come in first to abdicate himself of all responsibility.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to put Mary Daly on her own on this one, like she did with me on the graffiti. Look, I think it's great to have the debate around maintaining cycle infrastructure, because if we take it from a couple of years ago, where there was no Active Travel section, we've come a long way. The councillors are now in the chamber recognising the work that is being done and the money that has to be put aside. is being done and the money that has to be put aside for cycling infrastructure. The active travel section meet the Fingal Cycling Alliance on a regular basis and they've obviously identified a lot of these issues. Just for context, this year our allocation from the NTA was 20 million for capital projects. Our ask was nearly 40. We have 41 projects across the county and we've completed 20 safe routes to school programming in the short time that we've been there. And obviously we've provided over 60 kilometres of segregated cycleway across the county with lots more projects to do. And with that then does come the demand for money for maintenance and upkeep of cycling infrastructure, the new ones. But as some of the councillors have said, there probably was an ad hoc approach in relation to provision of cycling infrastructure pre to obviously the active travel section being set up. So there is work to be done from old cycling infrastructure that is out there in the county and we recognise that. But that's in the hands of the members because the funding, we receive no funding from the government in relation to management, to maintenance, or...
Sorry, could you repeat that?
We receive no funding from central government for maintenance of cycling infrastructure. So that has to come from the annual budget that the members will be presented with in a couple of weeks' time, so that's a member, that's a matter for the decision. But, look, we accept that there's an issue especially about the older infrastructure and there is, the other thing I want to say is there is all different designs under DMOs depending on the location and what's there, because in some instances we're using the width of the existing cycle roadway and then other ways, other areas we have space off-site that we have, we can put in cycling infrastructure. And there's a mix of that up in St Cronin's, there's a different solution in Val Doyle, there's a different solution out in the R132. So it depends on the network that's there. But as I said, we recognise there's work to be done, but it is a matter for the members to make the money available and then obviously it's a matter for Mary Daly's operations department to spend it.
Ms Daly?
Thank you very much, Chair, thank you very much, Mr Story, for your assistance. Maybe I should buy him colouring pencils for drawing his lines and colouring them in for Christmas. No, I take on board everything that the members have said. If you look at Division B, which will be coming before the members at the budget meeting, if you look back over the last three or four years, we've put huge investment, a huge increase in Division B on the regional and local roads with regards to management and maintenance. And maintenance is provided far within the revenue budget and it's not funded by government, but we have increased the maintenance costs substantially over the last number of years. There's a specific budget there from the point of view of cleaning the cycle lanes, we've had to get equipment, new equipment in to clean the lanes, to salt the lanes, et cetera. So there has been a lot of changes from the point of view of the maintenance. The area engineers are very well aware of the areas that are a priority, they can't get everything done at any one time, but we do rely on the public informing us and you, the members informing us as well. I will certainly highlight it to all four area engineers and clerks of works and ask them to, more than likely they have a priority list anyway with regards to what areas need to be done. With regards to the works programme, the area works programme will be going to the members in December. It's up to each area if you want to take a portion of that budget and put it towards specific maintenance works on cycle lanes, I don't have any issue with that. I will speak to each of the area managers and see what we can do. But we are maintaining them and we have certainly changed the practice from the point of view of we've had to change the way we're doing things because of the number of cycle lanes that we have. Weeds are a particular problem, it's very labour intensive, the process we have to go through because we can't use pesticides. But I do take on board, councillor Graves mentioned about the grass going into the lanes and absolutely I'll relay that back to the teams. So the work programmes will be coming to the members and if there's any particular areas of that that you want included, I have no issues with getting the area engineers to have a look at it. Thank you very much, members.
councillor Donnelly?
Thanks very much and thanks everybody that came in in support of the motion. I'm just a little bit perplexed in that we're continuing to roll out new cycling infrastructure, which is brilliant, but that is continuing to put more of a, more pressure on the operations department going forward to maintain. And there needs to be a quid pro quo in the funding that we're getting, like it's brilliant to get funding for active travel, but part of that funding, and I don't know how you solve this, part of that funding should be for the infrastructure then of the active travel. It's like giving a child a toy for Christmas and telling them they're not getting any batteries once that set runs out, you know, it just, it doesn't make sense. So the motion requests a survey of the cycle lanes that are five years or older to be undertaken, it's not going to happen overnight, but we need to begin that surface now because if we're really serious about promoting active travel, we need to ensure that our active travel network is fit for purpose, it's a safety issue. And if we want people to use this, we need to be confident that they will be safe whilst using our active travel infrastructure. Thanks. I'd like the motion agreed.
Is the motion agreed? Agreed. Okay, and item number 36, councillor Humphries. Need to get new glasses.
Sorry, Mary, I had the right name in anyway. I'm actually glad, I'm actually kind of glad this motion wasn't reached at the last meeting because in the meantime we had a very successful kind of swim Ireland Olympic programme and the Paralympic programme with Rosheen Narain, Mona McSherry and Daniel Wilson, all coming home with medals in swim categories, kind of further highlights the importance of investing in municipal swimming pools, especially in Fingal who currently we don't have one. Like, on the back of that, we've also seen the National Swim Strategy being published and kind of one of the striking elements in the public consultation of that was that just under 50% of people don't live within walking or reasonable driving distance from a swimming pool. And considering that we're an island nation and swimming is, in my opinion, is a necessity, it's a shame that it's not more accessible to the majority of people. Investing in municipal swimming pools is not just kind of about physical activity, like these facilities are crucial in promoting kind of mental health, social inclusion and wellbeing. Accessible swimming pools benefit people of all ages, including seniors and infants because kind of unlike other kind of other exercises, swimming and kind of water activities is for all ages. Anyone who's kind of banging on the doors during the local elections whose knees and joints are in bits at the moment can certainly appreciate that swimming is an awful lot easier. Kind of last summer, we've seen the benefits of kind of pop-up pools, particularly in Donegal Bay. Look, these kind of innovative ideas that kind of were pointed here in Fingal, it was a pity that we didn't see more progress in them this summer. They also offer kind of affordable and a quick solution that is kind of meeting the growing demand. Anyone that's kind of looking for swimming lessons at the moment certainly knows full well how much of a demand there is. Like with the report, the National Swim Strategy kind of just recently published by central governments, there is a local authority swimming pool programme, which I do recognise that we're pursuing for at Bal Briggan. But there's also a large scale social infrastructure fund. The reason I'm pushing this motion forward is to kind of single errant intent that Fingal is ready to move fast in building more swimming pools for the county because we did have an audit back in 2021 that identified that there is a shortage of pools in Swords and Bal Briggan across the North County and in the next couple of weeks we're going to have a broader report published that I am confident is going to show that we have a shortage of pools across the Fingal county.
Time, councillor Humphries.
I'll finish on this point, Mayor. By including in our capital budget, it just puts us in a position to move faster when these further funding streams that have been...
Time, thanks, you'll get to come back in.
...have been appointed by the capital and I'll finish there.
I'd welcome and thank councillor Humphries for putting this on the agenda. I can remember speaking on this some seven, eight years ago in relation to Bal Briggan and even then Swords were looking for a swimming pool and it just kind of speaks volumes for where we're at now at the moment. But I just want to ask, can the members be informed of the outcome of the feasibility study and at what stage are we with the sports infrastructure grant application for the swimming pool? And just to highlight the fact, it's ironic that this would come up, but this morning I'm talking to my wife, my son is 10, he, during Covid, he would have been learning how to swim. Now Swim Ireland have a project where kids of that age are being prioritised because they, because of Covid, they hadn't got the opportunity to learn how to swim. And the nearest project that we do have is in Holy Trinity in Donegal, in the Dublin CC area. So I think it's, I think it's very important that we do have a swimming pool or two in Fingal and if they're in Swords and Bal Briggan, I'd very much welcome it. Thank you.
councillor Corrigan?
Which I'm very happy to support. I think it's important too that the latest version of this motion refers to swimming pools, plural, because, look, while I genuinely welcome the progress that's being made in Castlelands, we've been talking about a pool in Swords for years upon years upon years and based on the report here, I'm disappointed to see that there isn't reference to what is the largest town in Fingal. So the only thing that I would say is that, you know, my ask to Fingal now would be to actively seek out sites, preferably where there is housing due to be built because as we know, we have a variety of different housing developments in place and in planning, you know, from Moor Town to Seetown to Holywell. So, look, I would call for that pace to be sped up, to echo what councillor Humphries has said, but again, you know, happy to support this. Thank you.
councillor Dennison?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I appreciate there's a cost, ongoing cost in operating and managing swimming pools, but in terms of the capital cost, I wondered to what extent have we looked at modular swimming pools? Members might be familiar with the Cork club that acquired the swimming pool that was used in the Commonwealth Games and they're setting it up. Councillor Humphries referenced the Olympics. The Olympic swimming pool in Paris was built in 36 days. It's a modular swimming pool. And this is a new technology that we should be looking at as well, we don't have to start digging holes in the ground and going for very expensive builds. So I'm just wondering if that's something we've looked at or can be looking at and that could be a solution certainly in the short term to our swimming pool problem in Fingal.
councillor O'Leary?
Yeah, welcome the motion, delighted to see the progress on the Bal Briggan project and that we have recreation consultants there during the feasibility study in the business case for the swimming pool at Castlelands, where we're going to, well, we are the land agency, are going to build 800 homes and they'll have this beside them along with a community centre, which is great, I was up there this morning. So have we any idea of kind of the cost at this stage? Look forward to the report, I got it on the doors in Scarrys and Bal Briggan from avid swimmers with large families who are travelling long distances for swimming facilities. So these would be the sort of people who an Olympic swimmer might emerge from and so we need a decent swimming pool there. The story about the swimming pool in Cork that was bought from the UK from the Commonwealth Games for 100,000, now sitting on the back of a truck, cost one and a half million, it was a 50 metre swimming pool similar to the one in Paris. So as Kieran Dennison just alluded to, there's great opportunity with new technology and the modular swimming pools and hopefully we can look at that in this project. Anyway, I look forward to the feasibility study being progressed and that we move on this. It's a public swimming pool built by the council with government support and money. We travelled 10 years or more with a public private partnership and it didn't work because it wasn't feasible or sustainable. So I'm delighted we're building a public swimming pool in Bal Briggan and we can figure out the working model afterwards. Thank you.
Sorry, with the permission of the meeting, I'm looking to extend for six minutes, seven minutes to finish the item. Agreed. councillor McCamney?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank councillor Humphries for bringing the motion forward. But just like the motion prior to this one, we built the cycle aids, have we got the money to maintain them? So I'd just like to ask if we build the pool, do we have the money to maintain them? And the reason why I ask that is, in the last few weeks, I have been hearing more and more people on my WhatsApps from Finglis saying that the Finglis Pool on Mello's Road has been closed due to lack of people to run it. So they haven't got the staff, in other words, so the pool is closed at certain times, people walk up to the door, sorry, the pool is closed, we haven't got anyone to run it, and they have to walk away. So whereas we would all love a swimming pool and of course it's going ahead and hopefully it will go ahead, and it's something that we certainly need, having seen what we saw in the Olympics. Certainly children do need their own swimming pools around the area, but just to be careful, when we build it, will we have the money to maintain it? They are quite expensive to run.
councillor Hopkins?
For keeping this on the agenda, swimming pools are absolutely vital, swimming is a life skill. I think we need a total change of policy in this country around sport, we're not investing nearly enough. I don't want to spend the next five years in this council, cap in hand, begging for facilities that don't arrive. If I were living in Germany in the morning, if I was living in a town that reached a population of 10,000, I'd get a public swimming pool. So somebody else do the math for me, we need more than two or three swimming pools in Fingal, I'd say at the very least we need four. And we need to do that with funding through central government. It's health and wellbeing and that's where we need to get the funding from. And I don't want to be having conversations about, oh, can we afford to maintain it? You know, we're a very rich country, a public swimming pool in our county, we're the second most affluent county in the country, it should be an absolute given. So I hope this happens and I hope we get a few more of them. Thank you.
councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Mayor. And I think everyone here would know my passion for delivering swimming pools. I think it's 25 years ago, Bal Briggan Rugby Club had the concept to deliver a giant venture and unfortunately it didn't work out. But that's how long, in my recall, that the community of Bal Briggan have been looking for a swimming pool. And I know that during that journey, the council has learnt a lot with regard to how you would deliver it, where you would deliver it, why you would. We have had our Bal Briggan consultation process where it has been celebrated as one of the biggest consultations in the country with 401 responses from people. And the biggest piece of interest was, could we have a swimming pool? Which was interesting and that's why it's on the agenda for the Castlelands area as a consequence of part of the process when we're delivering the Arby Briggan piece of business. I'm being bemused as well by some of the councillors talking about costs. When I brought a piece of business from the floor in 2022 when we're transferring 8 million from the revenue to capital of unspent budgetary funds in order to put it into and ring fence it into a fund for municipal pools across Fingal, we lost by two votes in that room and there was a debate around cost of running a swimming pool. But one of the most interesting pieces about that debate was when I did a piece of research and I went through the 31 local authorities in this country, 31 local authorities, and we're probably up there in the top four or five, I would think, from a point of view of our funds and what's available to us. But every single one of those local authorities have municipal pools and some have more than one and they wouldn't have anything like the budget that we have. So why we debate about the cost and the running cost? What we need to do is manage it, manage it properly, stitch it into our capital budget and get it done. And I would say to the executive and the members, we need to concentrate on delivering what we want to deliver for the people and when they ask us, that's the people we represent, so we have to get the business done for the swimming pool in Bal Briggan. Thank you.
councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome councillor...
I'd like to welcome councillor Humphries' motion. On my all travels while canvassing, that was one of my proposals, to get a swimming pool for Swords, but also welcome the county. When I was younger, I used to go swimming up to the airport, and I really enjoyed it as a child. It was quite a very important time during the winter time, because it was a gathering as well with friends, especially in the winter months, summer months maybe not so much, but definitely in the winter months. I think Swords is crying out for a swimming pool. I've been to, called a good few houses on my own whilst canvassing, and people were asking me about a swimming pool. So welcome your motion, Mr Humphries, or councillor Humphries, and I wish you best luck overall. Thanks.
councillor Graves?
Yeah, just, I'd be brief on this, because I know we're short on time, just to say, absolutely, I support the motion. I am happy to see that it is pools rather than one. I think, look, you know, we're building more and more houses. Shinfield launched their policy last week on development of the biggest housing project ever, and with the delivery of houses, we need the delivery of amenities and infrastructure, you know. My little grandson goes to school in School and Chalk to Lake, Ballymun, the kids from Rangahan, first class, go from school into swimming class next door, and that's when they start, like, we don't have anything like that for the kids in Swords, we don't have anything like that for the adults in Swords, you know. Or Val Briggan, or any of the other areas around, you know, it shouldn't be an action as to, does it go in Val Briggan, does it go in Swords? We need swimming facilities for the people in Fingal, and in Dublin-Fingal in particular at this stage. So happy to support the motion, and thanks for bringing it forward.
Normally I'd speak longer as a former swimming teacher and coach, but in the interest of letting everybody go home, I won't, other than say I support the, I support the motion. Do you want to come in, Mr Storey?
Thanks, Kieran. Members, as you're aware, there was provision in the capital budget last November to engage consultants. We've engaged the Consultants Recreation, who are experts in modular pools in the UK. We went over to the UK to see a modular pool in Rainham, which was very interesting to see that happening, and then that's where they gym, a swimming pool, and other facilities located beside the school. And we've asked them to look at the feasibility in that context for the Val Briggan site. In addition, as the members are aware, I should say, we've also submitted a large-scale sports infrastructure grant for the Val Briggan pool, and hopefully we'll get some word on that later on in the year. Just generally, the members, there is the sports audit that's been done at the moment, and we will be coming back to yous next month to present the sports audit for each area committee, and to go through that in detail. And that looks at the requirements for sports facilities at settlement level and then at local area level, so there'll be an opportunity for you to feed into that. And obviously, we'll have to look at what comes out in relation to swimming pools and the future provision in the capital budget. Also, as part of the feasibility study, we've asked consultants to look at the business case for operating the model of swimming pools, because there's different models that are out there where councils make subvention, there's other pools that are provided where if gyms are provided in association with the pools or in addition to the pools, there's no subvention required. So all those models are being looked at. It's hoped that the feasibility report will be, for the swimming pool in Val Briggan, will be available in October or November, late October, November, and we'll come back to the area committee to have a discussion about that. And obviously, then that has to go through the proper budgetary process in the provision of funds available for pools across the county. Thanks.
councillor Humphries?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief, I'll keep it very brief. There seems to be broad consensus that they support the motion, and so I'd like it agreed. Just before I want, before I do that, I just also want to kind of commend the council is that recently they have a swimming officer that has been doing, has put together a fantastic programme of, from synchronised swimming to swimming in the sea to swimming lessons. Just want to say that, just so I don't come across as completely negative.
Is the motion agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much. Thanks for... Oh, sorry, yeah, are there any other motions people want to propose, and second, and I've accepted councillor Newman's motion? What number is that, Joe? 39. Except, no, he said to the court. Anybody else? Okay, thanks. Meeting adjourned.